All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Would you please call this meeting to order? Or I'll call this meeting to order.
Do you want to do the invocation, or you want me to proceed with roll call?
Uh, would you, well, let's start with the roll call.
It's the roll call for the August ninth work session of the Mayor and City Council of the City of South Fulton. Your Honorable Catherine F. Rile, District One.
Present.
Your Honorable Carmenita Gums, District Two.
Present.
Your Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Your Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
Your Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Counted four.
And the Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid Kamau.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, uh, we do not have our city chaplain today, so I will just open with a quick word of prayer. I'll ask everyone where they are to assume a posture of prayer and meditation to, uh, whomever or whatever they believe. Our Father who art in heaven, thank you for the chance to gather once again as a city. Uh, please open our hearts and our minds to all the information, uh, that is to be shared today. And remind us, though we may come from different political perspectives and leanings, that we all do have the best interests of our neighbors, the citizens of South Fulton at heart. In your mighty and master's name, we pray and we thank you now. Amen. All right, uh.
Mayor.
Before we, uh, sound the first item, go ahead, Councilwoman Gums.
Well, I would like to make a motion to, um, amend today's work session agenda. So, um, according to Rile's Rules of Order, uh, forty-one sixty-two, newly revised, twelfth edition, uh, and adopt a revised agenda as follows, that it keeps only the following agenda items for the work session and remove the other items that is. First, to keep agenda item number three, the finance monthly report, the city manager's monthly report, and the council has already received the city attorney's written monthly report. Also, keeping agenda item number nine, Wolf Creek Amphitheater Discussion. And if my colleagues deem it necessary to have an executive session before or after our six P M. Special Call Meeting, I would like to remove the items of number one, the presentation on the Georgia Open Meetings Act and executive session, since this is an alleged claim in your lawsuit against the city council and city attorney. Secondly, the presentation on sanitation request for proposals update should be removed because mayor and council have been aware that this is a solicitation, that it's under the city's quiet period, and therefore, no one should be discussing this matter at this time. Item number three, it is my understanding that the renegotiation of the public works contract and restructuring is in work in progress and can be discussed at a later time. Number four, there are pending code enforcement cases in the city's municipal court system involving Camelot, so any discussions regarding Camelot should not occur. Allow the judicial process to proceed without comments or discussion from mayor and council. And because of the city's continued commitment to transparency, the council's audit and investigations, which is currently under the city's P. Card's use, this matter should also be removed at this time. And I will ask for my colleagues to support this and second.
It's a move.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing, give me one second. Uh, uh, Mr. Clerk, didn't you have the key open? We haven't. I haven't done this in a while. Uh. Just give me one moment, please.
Yes, let me, let me check it right quick.
Looking in the, uh, I'm, I'm looking in the novice agenda and I don't see, uh, an item for, under minutes, I don't see an item for the ninth. All right, but while you, while you are working on that, I am just going to ask if we could use the raising of virtual hands, uh, or the chat to, uh, uh, as a temporary queue. Um, I want to start, uh, the discussion. First, uh, I, I do hear those concerns about, uh, not discussing items that are currently in litigation or, or, or in process. However, Georgia's Open Meetings Act does not prohibit, or no law prohibits offering an update on any item on the agenda. It is, it is, uh, not a violation of any kind to update the city on the RFP process. We have, in fact, um, already closed that RFP process. Three people have applied, and that information is open to open records requests by any citizen, who those vendors are. So, uh, just giving an update about the RFP process to explain.
Point of order, Mayor.
Councilwoman Willis, what is your point of order?
You have seen, you seem to have information this entire council does not have. Um, how many vendors have applied? That's, that's, that's getting a little bit too specific. We have a motion on the floor, and it has been so moved.
I rec, I, I, I recognize your point of order. Uh, uh, Assistant City Manager Don Toms. Is, is it the case that the RFP for our sanitation service has closed? And that there are three applicants for which, uh, that information is open to.
Point of order, I would ask that our city manager not answer that question because that information has not been shared with the entire council.
Uh. So a point of order is, a, a point of order is, is a point of procedure. I'm gonna, I'm going to back up and say, uh, all of the information, all of the items that are in the current agenda are subject to open records requests by any citizen of this city. And clarifying the confusion.
Point of order, your, your assertions are not germane to the motion that's on the floor, Mayor. You have to follow the rules.
Okay, uh. So first, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. It is true, Councilwoman Willis, that any member of council can call a point of order at any time and stop conversation. It is true that any member has that right.
Point of order, Mayor. This, you are not, this is not germane to the motion that's on the floor.
This germane, um, I, I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Willis, uh.
Call for the previous question.
It is, it is not.
Point of order, you are now violating decorum.
It is, it is not, it is not for you to, to decide whether a point of order is or is not germane. That is not how Robert's rules works. Uh.
There was a call for the previous question.
I, I, we are, we are in discussion, and under the rules of decorum that were passed unanimously by this council, members are allowed to have discussion about a motion or an item. I am in discussion about a motion or an item. Uh, and I am responding to the reasons given in the motion that items should be removed from the agenda. It is not my opinion that these items violate any laws of the state of Georgia. And for, for that reason, because there is confusion, I have invited the General Counsel of the Georgia Municipal Association, who is on the call now, to give us guidance about what is and is not allowed under Georgia Open Meetings laws. So I would, I would request that if nothing else, we continue with the presentation from the Georgia Municipal Association's legal counsel, who has trained all of us on what is and is not allowed under Georgia Open Meetings Act. I would humbly request that they be allowed to give their presentation, uh, about and educate both the council and the citizens about what is allowed under Georgia Meetings, uh, Georgia's Open Meetings Act. And that will, uh, I will, I will end my discussion there, um, with this, with this final reminder that every item on this agenda is subject to Georgia's Open Meetings Act. And information about any item on this agenda can be requested at any time by any citizen of the state of Georgia. In the queue, I see Councilwoman Willis.
I'm move the previous question. Second.
So moved, uh, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the vote for the previous question?
The motion to call the question, roll call vote, Councilmember Rile.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously. The question has been called.
Thank you. Uh, will you please, um, announce all of the items that have been stricken from this meeting's agenda so that I can update?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Gums, seconded by Councilmember Willis, to remove item two. I'm sorry, to remove item five, Georgia Open Meetings Act and Executive Sessions. Move item six, sanitation request for proposals update. To remove item seven, renegotiation of public works contract. And remove item nine, I'm sorry, move item ten, Camelot update. And remove item eleven, overview of eligible P. Card usage. And lastly, to add an executive session.
All right, I just want to be, so we're removing, I'm sorry, the Georgia Open Meetings Act. All discussion about sanitation. Uh, did we say the public works contract as well?
Yes.
Wow, okay, um. And Wolf Creek Amphitheater?
No, not, not Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Item ten, Camelot update, and item eleven, overview of eligible P. Card usage.
Okay, so for the record, for this work session, we are just going to hear the, uh, finance report, the city manager's report, and a discussion about Wolf Creek Amphitheater.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right.
So roll call vote, Councilmember Rile?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously?
All right, thank you, uh. Mr. Clerk, say on the next item.
Next item is item number three on the monthly reports. The first will be finance monthly report. This will be provided by Karen Slaton Dixon, who serves as the Finance Director.
All right.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor Council. Um, I'm gonna ask on the financial monthly report that we'll not be presenting that on this evening because as agreed upon with our consultants that we're using as an outsource, some of our accounts haven't been reconciled because we don't currently have staff on board. Uh, our financial, uh, financial manager just came on board July the fifth, so she's currently working with them to get our accounts reconciled so that we can give you accurate information. So for this month, we won't have, um, a finance report, and then the budget to act was not going to be as that because those accounts have not been reconciled. So I do apologize for that. But we'll work tirelessly to try to get something ready for, um, September as possible. So I'm gonna move into the August and September budget calendar, and as shown here, our first public hearing for our milage rate is gonna be on Tuesday, August the sixteenth, and that will be a nine A M. Uh, virtual meeting. And then moving to Tuesday, August the sixteenth, we're gonna have our department, um, had presentations on that particular day, and we divided the departments up so that all the departments are not on the same day, and this will start at ten A M. And that is a virtual meeting as well. And then we have on the eighteenth, our second half, our department budget presentations, which will also take place virtually, and that will start at, um, ten A M. Then we will have our second and our third public hearing for our milage rate and the adoption of the milage rate. Uh, we'll do one at, um, ten A M. on Tuesday, August the twenty-third, and then six P M. at Wethelaw Park, and that is where we would need to have a vote on the milage rate in order to meet the county's, um, deadline with sending out the, the tax bill. And then on September the thirteenth, Tuesday at three P M., this will also be a virtual meeting. This is gonna be our first public hearing and reading of our F Y. Twenty-three, um, budget. And then on Wednesday, September the twenty-first, at six P M., which will be held at City Hall, we'll have our second public hearing in the adoption of the F Y. Twenty-three budget, which our budget, uh, fiscal year will start October the first, so it's critical that we have the adoption in place, um, on, at this particular meeting. And so that is our current August and September budget calendar.
All right, uh, that concludes your presentation, madam.
Yes, it does.
All right, we, our queue does seem to, let me just check. All right, we're just gonna keep using, uh, the, the, the queue, we're just gonna keep using the raising of hands, um, and, and the chat box. Uh, my, my, my first question, um, Ms. Dixon, is what is the, what is the latest information you have, uh, for our, uh, speed camera, school zone, and pedestrian safety fund? What are the, what are the latest totals that you have?
The latest numbers that I have show we have a collection of about forty-nine dollars in that particular line item, which we will be bringing that out of the general fund and setting it up in a special fund so that that will be clearly identified for the mayor and council moving schools.
And, and I'm sorry, you, you broke up a little bit. What did you say the total amount was?
About four million dollars.
Uh, four million dollars. All right, uh. Thank you, and I see in the queue, uh, Dr. Rile.
Um, Ms., Ms. Dixon, um, uh, if I recall, this may be the first time that we have not actually had a budget report. I, I will say I'm concerned about that. I just want to say that on the record. Um, do you even have a rough percentage to where we are in the budget? And I know we're getting very close to year end, close out. Typically, in August, we're looking at, you know, usually have a budget amendment to close out the year because our, uh, fiscal year ends September thirtieth, and, you know, towards the end of August, we're generally shutting down expenditures so the staff can, you know, close out the year uh, or begin that process. And given that we just don't have a clear picture, are we at sixty, seventy percent? Do you have any kind of figures to share with us?
Uh, not at this time, um, Dr. Rile. I really would hate to go on the record, and I reached out to Ms. Rachel Remby, who had been helping the city, and as you know, since I came aboard, they have actually been focused on trying to get the, the F Y. Twenty-one audit completed, which that, which that is a challenge because we're having to try to go back and figure out stuff, um, that was kind of left over from, you know, prior employees. So we're not able to really find information, so it's taking a little bit long in that process, which they could not focus on during the bank reconciliation. And I do not have staff on board that could actually take on that challenge. They tried to attempt to show, um, at least one person, and that person didn't grasp it, so we just, they said to stop because they needed to focus on the F Y. Twenty-one audit, which is critical for us to finish. You know, I will say, you know, just kind of looking at preliminary, the city is in a good position. We are not, no department is at the point where we are overspent. Um, so the city is still at a good point, but in order for me to give you some numbers, and then I'm gonna put it out into the public atmosphere, we just felt like it would be best not to present that.
Okay, and when you talk about that four million for traffic, um, for the school safety zone cameras, that's for all, every sentence has been in an inception. Is that correct?
Well, I'm just looking at F Y. Twenty-two.
Okay.
Because if time passed at the end of the fiscal year, it rolls over into prior year. So it's not sitting in a separate fund like we are proposing for F Y. Twenty-three. So then it sits out there, and it's its own fund, and you'll be able to see that running balance as time pass.
Understood. Thank you. That's, that's the only question I have at this time.
All right, next in the queue, I see Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. Um, Mrs. Dixon, uh, with the camera, um, revenue of four million dollars, isn't it true that the council has voted on how we are supposed to spend those expenditures?
Yes, that is correct, and that's gonna be part of our proposal when we bring the F Y. Twenty-three so that it's set up just the way the, the council has, um, authorized it to be set up.
Okay, thank you. And isn't it true that four million dollars, you said that is, uh, accumulation of, uh, fiscal, uh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, revenue?
Fiscal year twenty-two. It's the, the current, the current.
The current fiscal year, okay. All right, and, um, this might be a little bit too detail, but have you seen that revenue account decrease, uh, in comparison to the fiscal twenty-twenty-one?
Uh, no, I haven't, because we actually looked at it, um, I don't have that number right here in front of me, but we looked at it as we were going through our revenue, um, projections. And so that's, that's one reason why we kept it, you know, at four million.
Okay, thank you so much. Ah, yeah.
All right, next we have Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Um, Ms., um, Dixon, I do have a question. We, we have a meeting coming up on the twenty-fourth. Is it even possible to get even a higher level report than, um, that maybe what you, you normally present, would present because to Councilmember Rile's, um, point, we're really coming down at a crucial point, um, in terms of our budget cycle. So at least for me, the new guy, again, I, I would love to see something before we kind of have to delve into the, the rest of the budget for F Y. Twenty-two, twenty-three.
All right, all right. I will first, um, talk to Sebastian, let's see what we can do, because we've been so knee-deep in, in budget, um, kind of challenges here, but I will work with staff and see what we can pull together at a high level to at least give you all, um, something.
Yeah, I, I am the Senate. Certainly not my intention to give you and the staff sleepless nights. Um, I just think it is, it is really important for us to have, um, at least something going into September.
Okay, understand.
Thank you. Are you, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, so some follow-up questions, Ms. Dixon. The, uh, this calendar that you have in front of us is the proposed, um, meeting calendar that we have. I I'm assuming that in order to have department budget presentations next Thursday, August the eighteenth, that we will have to approve this calendar. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and so the only date that we have to approve this calendar before Thursday, the eighteenth, is today. Uh, we don't normally vote in these meetings, or Tuesday, August the sixteenth. So, uh, at, at, when I have concluded these comments, I would, I, I asked our council to be thinking about that and to, and I will entertain, um, a motion from the floor on when they would like to approve this calendar so that we can lock it in, and people that are making those presentations on the eighteenth or the twenty-third or these upcoming dates will have as much notice as possible. Uh, that, that, that is going to be my ask. But, uh, before, before we get to that, I do have another question. The, um, the proposed date, do you have a proposed date for when the, uh, finance department will cut off all spending for the city? For this fiscal year?
All right. And, and Mayor, I need to clarify that we are not actually, uh, needing to vote on this. We are actually just presenting this calendar for, um, information purposes because I've already had to publish and advertise the, the milage rate, this, this schedule with the milage rate and everything because there was a deadline to get it in the, the paper. And like I said, to meet the county's deadline with getting the bills out. So this is basically for information purposes.
Right, so, so, uh, uh, I'm sorry, to back up, we have advertised the first public hearing for the milage rate on Tuesday.
We've been advertised for the first and the second. It's been advertised for the first and the second.
So in effect, this, this calendar isn't so much of a draft as just a calendar of, of meetings that we need to approve as a council.
That is correct.
So we, so we're gonna, and so again, I just, I, I, I make that point again, uh, whether we do it today or on the sixteenth, we do need to go ahead and approve this calendar and move it from a draft status to a, uh, to a real status because it, it sounds as if meetings are already being scheduled. The, but, but to my, um, to, to my, my previous question, do we have a date for when, uh, the finance department is going to ask, uh, to cut off all spending for FY twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, I'm gonna propose, um, probably the twenty-fourth of August and the twenty-sixth of August to set it down because I know a lot of people still have P cards and it does create an issue, uh, for us as it relates to receipts and getting everything posted. So, so we will be drafting emails and sending out to everyone for the twenty-sixth of this month.
Okay, so Friday, the last Friday of this month will be, will, will likely be the last, the last time to submit any expenditures for FY twenty twenty. Next, uh, there was for a URA hearing. Uh, did you have a particular date in mind that you would like the council to consider as we consider the rest of this calendar?
And I am not the one who's holding the URA. Um, I'm not sure if that is something with, um, that Cory can speak to.
Uh, well, I'll actually, I'll actually ask that question. Uh, is Mr. Valenzuela on the line? Or, uh, Miss, uh, Mr. Toms, you are the assistant city manager, uh, or, or I'm not, I don't believe, uh, Madam City Manager Jones is online, but can someone speak to whatever date?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Antonio.
How you doing, Mr. Valenzuela?
I'm doing very well. Thank you. Uh, do you mind repeating the question, please?
Uh, it was, a suggestion was made to have a follow-up URA meeting, uh, as part of the planning of the FY twenty twenty-three budget. Looking at this calendar, do you have a proposed date for council to consider having that URA meeting?
I, I don't, but, uh, can, we can make ourselves flexible. We actually sent uh, today, uh, most up-to-date information on your, URA to our city manager. I'm sure she'll make it available for you in the next couple of days. But it will be available at your convenience.
All right. So, well, thank you. So, uh, just to keep in mind that there may be additional meeting added to the meetings that we see here. Uh, as we're already in August and as, as we're already in August and there, there, there are a ton of meetings for August already, I would ask, I would ask you to bring back a recommendation for, or, or email a recommendation, um, for the URA meeting and to look at the, you know, possibly look at September, although I don't know if we can wait that long, how, uh, the URA projects list might affect the rest of these meetings. But I, I would ask that you all bring something back or email something, uh, email a suggested date to council that we might add to this calendar.
Uh, yes, I will do.
All right. And with that, I see in the queue, uh, Dr. Ral.
Um, previously I had, um, recommended that we have that URA meeting, um, either immediately before or after the special call meeting on the CDBG Annual Action Plan, which is scheduled for Tuesday, August sixteenth. We did receive a memo that we needed to have this meeting this month. And as the co-chair of the URA, we don't want to miss the opportunity to uh, bring the opportunity zone into our city. So since we would always already be together, it would make sense that we either do that before or after. It's really only one item to address on that agenda, Mayor.
All right. I, I thank you. I, I hear that, Dr. Ral. Um, I do think that well, uh, let me, let me start with my concern is that this meeting is at four o'clock on Tuesday and at six o'clock on Tuesday is the charter commission meeting. Is that correct? Uh, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, actually they moved it back to six thirty PM, uh, to accommodate the council.
Uh, I, I am concerned there are, um, quite a few URA projects, uh, particularly, uh, that come to mind, uh, Clifton Dale and Sandtown. And there is also discussion of in our entire public works department. And I'm not sure how that will affect the the timelines for completion of those projects. Um, suffice it to say, I'm just not sure that, that there will be enough time between four and six to have the kind of discussions that we need to have around the URA. That, that's my concern.
Can, can I suggest again that we look at either before, after, it could be three o'clock? The reality is, um, as Mr. Valenzuela has, um, noted and has been the case in the past, we will have a detailed, uh, written report on the status of those URA projects so that when we are together, we can be pointed in our questions for our staff. Um, but again, they're usually reporting out of where things are in the process where this one item is up for, you know, like we have to take action. And we received a memo that said that it was time sensitive last week. So again, if we did it at three o'clock, we're already planning to be together. Um, and it's the same day as we have a number of presentations. I mean, sixteenth is a full day from everything that I can see.
All right, uh, that duly noted. Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, I'm amenable to, uh, three o'clock on the sixteen. Um, Mr. Adams, can you just send out the poll to the entire council? Uh, we have already, uh, the six of us have committed to the sixteenth at four o'clock, but if you could please send a poll to everybody to see if we can, um, uh, if we're amenable to three o'clock. That would, I mean, that would give you the consensus you would need on whether or not we can do three o'clock. My question is to Ms. Dixon. Ms. Dixon, um, is there any way possible that we could, uh, do the cutoff on the, to make it cleaner for everybody um, who do have P cards? Um, can you, uh, is it possible for us to make the cutoff on the thirty-first versus that Friday, the twenty-sixth? Um, that's just a, that just gives us three more days. That just gives us until the end of the month.
Yes, we can do that, Councilwoman Willis.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, um, also, if you could, um, ask your staff to, um, because I know I pulled, uh, my transaction detail and there were some things that hasn't been, um, uh, keyed. So if they can go ahead and I know that you all are under a lot of stress and, uh, staffing is a concern, but, um, I know that, uh, a lot, that the council works closely with, uh, your team to make sure that we reconcile our expenditures. And, um, what we have is what you all have. And, um, if you could go ahead and ask your staff to, um, you know, get caught up in that area, that would help, that would help us out a lot um, with reconciling. And that's the only reason I'm asking for a couple of more days because I know I pulled the report last week and there were some things that weren't, um, keyed in yet.
Yes, I will check into that because I know they just did some for June and July, so I'm
Okay. And what I'll do is if there's anything missing on my end, I'll just, um, ask the city manager, can I schedule some time with you? And, or the person you delegate to work with me to get, uh, my expenditures, uh, caught up. All right, thank you.
Uh, we can do that.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, is there anyone else in the queue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was.
All right, uh, Councilman Reeves?
Yes, uh, Ms. Dixon, I just wanted to, um, piggyback on Dr. Ral and, uh, my colleague, uh, J.C. Sebastian, L.D. not having the budget, uh, he, uh, update. As that gives me concern about the department head's presentation and the accuracy of it. If the bullet, budget challenges that are now that are not accurate, uh, that you can't report on, um, will they be accurate when they give this presentation on the sixteenth? And if not, should we hold off a day or two? Because I don't feel comfortable with hearing budget presentation from department heads when we don't have a budget update today.
Well, the main thing with the, the budget update is gonna be on our, our revenue collection and making sure that our bank account is, um, is accurate. Now, as far as expenditures, when it comes down to the departments, they go in on kind of like on a right now basis because all of that is pretty much processed through the account calendar. So once the account calendar is done, it hits the GL for the departments. So those numbers are, are fine on that side. We just need to make sure over on the revenue side that that is, is all accounted for. Because right now we show that revenue is coming in to meet those expenditures, but we want to be one hundred percent, uh, sure. I don't see where we would actually take away any of that revenue. All it's gonna do is increase it.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the queue? All right.
Yeah, Mayor, I apologize. If I can give a quick update, we just got a, um, email in regards to um, Fulton County. So we may not be able to have the Tuesday on the sixteenth, nine AM, uh, virtual meeting because they had actually, I guess, received some some numbers that are not necessarily accurate. So they're gonna have to update our numbers and we send the information to us. So it's a possibility with the millage rate that we probably won't be able to do that until August, uh, the twenty-third based on Fulton County. And I just got that email, it's kind of like just now.
Okay, so erring, erring on the side of caution, are we saying that we are not going to have the first public hearing of the millage rate on August sixteenth?
Not at this time, but, um, but Cory will send out an updated schedule. Once we get information, the county has said they'll reach out to us in the morning. So once we get that information, we'll have a better idea of what that date will be for the first public hearing.
But we are, but you are ready to have, uh, I, this, this question would probably be for Mr. Toms. Uh, you are ready to start department budget presentations on the sixteenth?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I, I would say yes, because what you'd be hearing will be the department request for the, um, expenditures for the department and their needs. So you could push it back, but I don't see a, a need for that.
All right. Uh, do you have a, so I see department budget presentations on the sixteenth, on the eighteenth. We have two days of presentations.
That, that is correct. Yes, sir.
Uh, would, would you please, as soon as possible, email the council, um, which departments will be presenting on which days and a possible timeline? You know, the way that I do these uh, meeting agendas so that, uh, we can time out how long uh, each department will have for their presentation and how long the presentations will last in total.
Ye- yes, sir. If that hasn't been sent out, I will, I will check on that and have that sent out, um, first thing in the morning.
All right. Um, and then lastly, I'm gonna ask you to go ahead and, uh, put that calendar back up, uh, Mr. Adams. Because as a matter of process, thank you. Um, as a matter of process, the council has not approved this calendar. Uh, we are going to begin department budget presentations at ten AM, um, says five hours before we are planning a special call meeting. Uh, so I'm going to ask, uh, I'm, I'm gonna take the extraordinary step and ask for a motion, uh, to approve this calendar, uh, sans the, uh, public hearing, uh, at nine AM on the sixteenth. But to approve, but, so taking off the, the public hearing at nine AM and simply approve this calendar, uh, the rest of this calendar with the department presentations beginning on Tuesday, the sixteenth.
Mayor, I have a question. Can I be recognized?
Councilwoman Willis.
Um, Mrs., is there a reason why you had this in a draft? Is there, do you need more time to uh, do something else to this calendar? I'm not, I wasn't prepared to vote on this today, was I? And, I mean, it's not on the agenda. So, I mean, my question would be to the finance or the city manager, is there a reason this is in draft form? Because typically when something is in draft, that, that means it's still a work in progress.
I, I believe it's a draft just because we have
Asking the city manager or either this finance chair, because this is their calendar.
I, I understand. I was just providing a, a bit
Yeah, but I need to speak to the subject matter experts, please.
I, I understand, Councilwoman Willis. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, I'll speak to that, Councilwoman, uh, Willis. This calendar actually was created by Cory. Cory got with me on the, the dates there. And so this was the potential meeting schedule and it may just be that the draft wasn't taken off of there because I know the dates for the, the millage rate and for the budget are pretty much kind of pressing. We need those dates, I think, after the advertising. And so we needed to get that renewed, uh, set, so.
Okay, you went out, you went out a little bit. So you're saying basically the calendar is pretty, is pretty, uh, solid?
Correct. And this was, yes, based on our timeline and our schedule and what we are kind of faced with as far as advertising. Because we have to put these in, you know, the publications and they're always published on certain days. So it was like we needed to get this done. And so Cory got these dates from us and, and set it up. I'm not sure if it was his intent to leave it in the draft, but I'll have to let him speak to that.
Okay. I appreciate your explanation, Ms. Dixon. Mr. Adams, was there, was there, um, any intentions or, um, to leave it as draft? And from your perspective, is this pretty, pretty solid?
Yes, uh, thank you for that question. Uh, it's my understanding, um, based on Ms. Slaton Dixon that this schedule was pretty, uh, pretty much set in stone. Uh, I should have taken draft off, but I didn't neglect it to check with her to, to make sure that it was final, uh, before I took the draft off.
Okay. I, I would like to make a motion, but I'm gonna hold off because I see my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Ral had her hand raised.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. So, so, uh, again, Mr. Clerk Adams, uh, this as I was, as I was stating earlier, it, it was my understanding that this calendar was in draft format because it had not been approved by council.
Yeah, you asked me that question?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, my understanding, based on the time constraint that Ms. Slaton Dixon, as she stated earlier, um, had to advertise, so, um, they provided the dates to me. I put it in calendar format, but it was for information and not necessarily for approval this evening.
Thank you, uh. Thank you, uh. Councilwoman, uh, Rowell.
Thank you. Um, I was actually looking at our charter, and I didn't, I did not see where it requires. Us to adopt a budget calendar, but it is required that we adopt by ordinance. Or vote the um council schedule, like work sessions and and council meetings, which we've already done. They just happen to be on this calendar. So I don't think that we're um in violation of any ordinance. And again, I'm just looking at the charter, maybe something somewhere else. Um, could you find any? I was gonna ask the city attorney or city clerk. Um, do they see that it's required that we d- need to do anything? Other than to show up for these meetings. I don't think it's required that we vote on this. We never have in the past.
So. I'm sorry, someone opining about that that matter?
I I mean, I I hope they are, but I I I don't ever require call this being an issue in the past. Again, we had already adopted, I think, at our May meeting, the remain, the calendar for the remainder of the year. Which happened, he just included it on there, but the budget ones have not had that to be the case in the past. And if I recall in our May meeting, Ms. Dixon, you can confirm that you basically uh noted these dates then, we had a handout. Am I correct?
Yes, that that was correct. I will give the dates, yes.
Yeah, this is not the first time we've heard this date, and I just. I I don't wanna make something the issue that's not an issue, because it's not, it's not required.
All right, uh, thank you, Dr. Rowell. Uh, it's not my intention to make this an issue. I just wanted to check in with all the members of council that they are aware of these dates. That they are okay with these dates and that they are available for these dates. The vote is just simply. Uh, to say, we see these dates, we're aware of these dates, and it is okay to publish all of these dates. For the rest of the city. Uh, if if the. Council does not feel a need to do that, and there is consensus that. All of these dates are fine and that this calendar can be published, then I would ask our our city clerk to go ahead and. Remove the 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 word draft and publish the uh, publish the calendar for the city, so the citizens know that this is when these are happening.
Thank you, will do.
All right, and and the uh the. I guess, when would we know for certain whether or not we're going to have a first hearing of the mileage rate at nine?
Uh, Mayor, we we won't be having that meeting um for on the sixteenth because of the the advertising. Uh, advertising date, we have to do it within seven days, and just based on. The posting, the origin that we have to use, the sixteenth will not work, because it has to be advertised seven days prior to. And if we won't get our information till in the morning, the tenth, that's not gonna be enough time to advertise for the sixteenth, so. We're correcting the posting, you know, posting and everything, so so the sixteenth meeting will not take place.
Okay, so would the, would the second and third public hearings for the mileage rate become the first? And the second public hearings for the mileage rate on the twenty-third?
Let me get back with you um on tomorrow, once we speak with them to see how we're gonna have to do this, because um. The county was the one who actually mentioned the sixteenth date for us. To actually do it in order to meet their guidelines. So now I need to find out, if we can't do it on the sixteenth, when are they expecting us to to do it?
All right, so you you will just get back to us then on, it sounds like this calendar might not be ready to go completely. Uh, we will, we can publish the dates that we know for the presentations, but uh. We'll have to have you get back with us on the dates for the public hearings.
That's correct.
All right, um, well, I'm available virtually every day, so uh whatever date. I'm fine with, and it sounds like. I'm fine with it too. Uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to limit debate on the remaining agenda items to ten minutes each.
So move.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Uh. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Hi.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is City Manager Monthly Report, will be provided by Assistant City Manager, Don Toms.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Donald Toms, and I will be presenting the City Manager's Report on behalf of the City Manager today. The City Manager's Report is not all inclusive of all the good work that our employees do on behalf of the citizens and businesses. Of the great city of South Fulton. One high priority on our list is to ensure the safety of everyone visiting our parks and participating in our events. We are currently working with our IT Department, Police Department, and our park employees. For security enhancements that will include cameras and additional security. On August thirty-first, the city will conduct a job fair and career expo at Welcome All Facility. In an effort to fill the approximately hundred and fifty-six vacancies um within the city between the hours of nine AM and one PM. Staff will be available on site and where we can conduct interviews, we will conduct them on site. Um, vacancies can also be viewed on our city webpage under the HR Department link. The Community Development Department will kick off community planning workshops in a few weeks. Regarding our community development block grant. Information to our community will be. Will be going out via our Communications Department shortly. In regards to our rental and mortgage assistance assistance program. Um, we will be, we will have additional information available after the presentation to council on August twenty-third. We anticipate that to be distributed through a third-party vendor. Um, and again, this is a reminder that this program is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Under Code Care's initiative and demolition of blighted properties, I'm proud to say that our Code Enforcement Department. Um, Code Care Initiative is growing and expanding and receiving donations from McDonald's, Publix, Home Depot. As well as local businesses and volunteers looking to assist. Um, some of you will also remember, maybe recall that. Uh, we did receive some positive footage on our local news channel. That uh went out there and covered one of our code code care initiatives. Uh, Code Enforcement has also abated or demolished twelve blighted properties this year. And are scheduled to abate several more before fiscal year twenty-two. In regards to the Fire Department, we we are happy and proud to announce that on July eighteenth. The Fire Department welcomed fifteen new fire recruits. Also, the Fire Department received three new fire engines within the last month. They will be all in service uh um by August nineteenth, and we thank the Mayor and Council for supporting. Uh, this um needed equipment. Uh, the Police Department is also doing some great things, and they had some recent promotions, which they conducted interview panels. For both the sergeants, lieutenants, and some civilian positions. The PD was able to promote eight sergeants, one lieutenant, two detectives, and a GCIC record supervisor. Um, one of the great things that we're all proud of is the National Night Out Event, and that was a great success. National Night Out was hosted by the South Fulton PD in partnership with the Fulton County Police Department. And that was held on August second at the LA Fitness Parking Lot on Old National Highway. This resort was a return of the nationwide event after a two-year hiatus due to COVID nineteen. We had a record number of government agencies, nonprofit organizations, and vendors. Um, turnout was great, and we do appreciate everyone that attended this this activity. Um, Stacks Road is open, and we do understand that there is some additional work to be done in this area. Um, there there was requests for some sidewalks and other i- other items, but we wanted to. First, make sure that we can get the road open and flowing for traffic, but we have not forgotten the other requests that. Were submitted to us and currently reviewing that with our engineers. And lastly, just want to remind Mayor and Council, the Publix that public, that our August twenty-third City Council Meeting. Will be held um in person at the Welcome All, uh, and the meeting will begin at four PM. And again, that is on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, a live meeting. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, I'm gonna open queue for questions, um. Uh, I'm gonna ask people to to just raise their hands again, because I don't know what's going on with this queue. Uh, first. Uh, Mr. City Manager, um, we. Have four million dollars in the uh Speed Camera Fund and a million dollars in the Pedestrian Safety Fund. I have been told that that million dollars has been expended, but I only know of one speed bump that's been installed anywhere in the city of South Fulton. So I would request, um, at the at the very next meeting or during the very next City Manager's Report. I've asked for this uh repeatedly over the past month, uh, but I would like to have a list. Or or a uh, a budget of all of the expenditures of that one million dollar pedestrian safety fund.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, for that comment. I'll do, I'll do better than that. I'll get out to the entire council. Um, and the mayor by the end of the week of the money that has been spent in regards to the. Um earmarked safety fund. So I I know there's been additional things besides that. Uh, speed bump you're talking about, and I I apologize that we haven't done a better job to update you. The council and the public, and we will get that information out. Um, I'll also work with our communications team to. Ensure that the citizens of South Fulton know where the money is going.
All right, thank you. Uh, a- and 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 next, I I wanna ask a series of questions about, um. Our our sanitation service and our RFP. Has our RFP closed?
Yes, it has closed. It closed on August, I mean, August fourth.
All right, and how many vendors applied to provide service?
We have asked that that not be discussed.
I understand that you have asked that, uh.
We voted for it not to be discussed. We took it off of the agenda. Mr. Toms, you have no authority. At this time to discuss anything concerning sanitation.
Uh, I understand that you took it off the agenda, but the City Manager's Report remains on the agenda, and this is not a privileged item. So I am asking for an update. You said that you didn't have this information, so I'm trying to make sure that you, the rest of council, and all of our citizens. Have this information.
I move that we suspend the rest of the City Manager's Report at this time.
And entertain the motion, uh, you would actually need to request from the chair to make a motion, and I have not uh entertained.
I move, um, I I disagree with, I appeal the decision of the chair.
You would have to ask to be uh recognized by the chair in order to make a motion.
I appeal the decision of the chair.
Uh, again, uh, there's no decision to be appealed because a question hasn't, a question hasn't been raised.
Ask our parliamentarian to give us a clarity on this issue.
People are, people are talking out of turn. People really wanna follow these rules uh when they are to their benefit. Um, so I'm gonna ask the question in a, in a, in a different way, uh, Mr. City Manager. When will we be able to get an update on the RFP process?
Now that you have rephrased the question, I will remove my motion from the floor. Thank you.
O- okay, if I'm permitted to speak, um, can you ref- restate that question, Mayor?
Since the request for proposal process has been closed. Which means we aren't taking any more proposals. When can we, as the council, and the one hundred eight thousand citizens of South Fulton. Get an update on our sanitation process?
As far as an, as an update on the sanitation process, I would like to state that I I'm not a part of the committee reviewing. Um, so I will receive an update from them, and I will, um. Discuss with the city, city attorney when to send out that information, but we. We anticipate to conclude the process within thirty days to be able to provide additional information to the council.
All right, thank you, because I am, I am simply, I I am, I am not asking to reveal any names. I am simply asking for an update on the timeline of the process. So that citizens and vendors and everyone involved in this process know how to proceed. And that we are able to properly budget, making out our uh budget for the next year. Uh, if we're going to be making any changes to our, um, if we're going to be making any changes to our sanitation process. Including setting up a possible uh customer service number or any other such things, hiring staff to execute it. All of these things are going to affect our budget, and we cannot make uh intelligent budget decisions without information. All right, and and with that, I will uh go to the next person that I see in in the queue, which is Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am, if that's the end of this discussion, I will just, I will yield the floor back. I am. Very concerned over any discussion around this. I I've, I I've, I let you know that before as well. Given that this is an RFP process, it's a very sensitive and illegal process. I just, we need to close, we need to close this. I I just think we need to close it. There is enough time after this process is finished legally for us to let people know what is happening. And and again, if folks make requests via the Opens Records Process. Those things are legally reviewed before being made public, so that. Nothing is put or said publicly that will jeopardize the the process. So a- again, I'm I'm. I'm just begging you to shut this down at this point.
Thank you, uh, Council, Councilman Sebastian. Uh, I I just will respond by saying it is not my intention to get the city in any trouble. However, I do know that we have a very active citizenry, and in the absence of information being provided. Citizens will draw conclusions, make assumptions, and publish them um on Nextdoor, on social media, and the various other outlets. I I apologize to the other members of council on the queue of the appears we have uh expired our ten minutes for this topic. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Thank you. The next item. On today's printed agenda is item nine, which is Wolf Creek Amphitheater, Part One. So it'll be presented by Corinne Smoot, Special Projects Manager in the City Manager's Office. Ms. Smoot, are you on the call? You're muted, you're muted.
Can you unmute?
Uh, there she is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am going to do a presentation on my findings with Wolf Creek Amphitheater. And I will begin to share my screen. Are you able to see anything?
No, it's not showing yet.
Not showing? Okay. No problem. There we go. See here, just trying to get things up and running. Okay. There we go. Okay, are you able to see now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll be discussing Wolf Creek. Uh, three points that we want to go over would be maintenance and cost, programming, timeline, and events procedures. Just for a brief overview, I want to uh bring everyone's attention to the lease agreement that we currently have in place. The lease agreement uh was actually a resolution approving a used lease agreement between the city of South Fulton and Fulton County for the use of Wolf Creek Amphitheater, which was signed uh into resolution on the twenty sixth of May. And the lease contract itself was signed by the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney on June sixth of this year. Three key points that I want to bring everyone's attention to is section one point two, which talks about the um exclusions. And one of the exclusions, one of the major exclusions is the Public Safety Training Center that uh we are to only have access and utilization of two offices that are located within the Public Safety Training Center, which is on the Wolf Creek Amphitheater's property, currently in the building labeled the Wolf Den. So there are two offices in there that can be utilized for operational purposes only. Sorry about that. Section three point one of that lease agreement talks about the terms. And um for those who aren't aware, that the terms of the agreement is for uh to expire December thirty first of this year, at which point uh assuming a decision will be made as to whether or not the venue will either continue as a county venue or be assigned over to the city as a city venue. And then also, uh, section four point three, maintenance and repair, that the uh lease, the leasing, which would be the city of South Fulton, is responsible for all of the maintenance uh and repairs for the facility while it is in our leased possession. And again, this is all in resolution two thousand twenty-two thirty-three. As it relates to maintenance and cost, I was able to contact uh Atlas Technical Consultants uh to uh see if they would be willing to do an assessment, and they did provide a a proposal where they will do a one-day walkthrough and provide us with a report uh within fifteen days of that uh walkthrough, but provided us with an estimate based off of some information that I provided them, uh schematics and other details, and did provide us with a ballpark figure of sixty-eight hundred. Uh, I have a copy of the proposal. I'm going to send this presentation out to Mayor and Council. Uh, so you'll be able to uh see the proposal in its entirety. Uh, the link is hyperlink, so when you receive this uh presentation, you'll be able to read the proposal in its entirety. I do want to make note that within the proposal, there is no assessment included for A V. Uh, so um no assessment will be done as relates to any of the audio visual uh equipment there or lack thereof. As we move further into the presentation, I do have a video for everyone to watch, and in that video, you will see mention of a two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand estimate for replacement of the L E D screens. Um, that will uh be described a little bit more detailed by Andre Allen, who is the C E O of Black Black Productions. And also hyperlinked the um website for his business. He's actually the person who does all of the production for um the Southwest Arts Center, uh as well as many previous productions at the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Groundskeeping currently for landscaping at the amphitheater runs about seventy-five to uh eight thousand dollars a month. And this is quoted from Stephen Maxwell, who's the Deputy Director for Parks and Rec for City of South Fulton. Moving on, I have a program timeline. Um, sorry, I see your hand. Uh, Councilwoman Willis.
No, I'll wait until you give us with your presentation.
Okay. So currently, there is an application, a special events application, and that is uh under the, uh, I guess under community development. The application fee is seventy-five dollars. There's a review of the application and all the supporting documents. And then upon approval of the application, there's a three business days to render payment of a non-refundable, uh, excuse me, of a refundable deposit. Uh, and that deposit would also include any of the damages that may be incurred and can't be refunded. Currently, this is a hard copy application. It is not in stages. I have hyperlinked the current fee structure that is set by Fulton County, but uh the current fee structure is subject to change depending on the desire of the city. And as you see below, here is a chart of the current fee structure as it states and as it stands for amphitheater. The events process, again, there's a seventy-five dollar non-refundable application review fee. The fee would, of course, be waived for council members. A ten-day or ten-business-day review process at which a decision would be rendered. And after a decision is rendered, upon approval, a rental agreement must be signed and associated fees no later than three business days from the date approved. For events booked within the thirty days of the actual event date, payment is due immediately. A security deposit is required. The minimum security slash damage deposit would be the dollar value equal to half of the rental fee. And it's required at the time of the rental agreement submission, and this is refundable upon the following conditions. And again, this goes back to any damages or any um any breach of contract. So all terms of the contract have been met. All facilities are left in good condition and clean, and cancellation procedures, if applicable, have been followed. I'd like to also make note that all events must have a certificate of insurance with liability coverage of no less than a million dollars, and this is standard. Uh, a million-dollar policy can run anywhere from, and this is for a one-day event, can run anywhere between a hundred to five hundred dollars uh for a uh policy, a one-day event policy. The security and damage deposit does not absolve the the event from having to have liability insurance, so you would still need to have that liability insurance placed. And then also letting those who want to do events know that because Wolf Creek Amphitheater is an outdoor venue and climate weather is not grounds for a refund. As for budgets, Wolf Creek as a venue is a beast of a venue. It's very large and uh essentially would require its own staff. In previous regimes, the operational staff at Wolf Creek was about four people. And the recommendation here would be two, and also considering that the uh Public Safety Training Center currently has two offices, then two staff members would be ideal. One would be an administrative coordinator. This is a salary range. Uh, that person would serve as the point person for application, inquiries, submissions, review, as well as any inquiries about use of the space, and would also be able to provide uh venue tours. And then a facilities maintenance technician who would serve as essentially a handyman who can, or handywoman, or handyperson, who can um do general maintenance and general services around the facility. Also included some additional information from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, the budget that was in place by Fulton County and the year-to-date expenditure. And then further down, I have the maintenance and repair budget or expenses. And as you can see, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, this was the amount that was spent on any maintenance repairs on that facility. Next, I will go to a video of an actual walkthrough. There is no sound on the beginnings of this video as it is solely for the purposes of showing you the spaces that are in need of the most repair, and that would be the restrooms. So in those previous shots, you saw where some of the urinals did not flush, the sinks did not work. These are tables in the skyboxes, the premium spaces that have been weather beaten. You'll see that some of the doors, sliding doors are off track. Cannot open or close. High-top tables falling apart. And I'm doing this walkthrough currently in this um this portion of the video with the Deputy Director of Parks and Rec. This is the security tower in vendor areas, and you'll see that the security tower door is rested off the hinge, as well as the rusted stairs leading up to the security area. And you'll see that through the window, the air conditioning unit doesn't work, and through the window, you can't see what areas that are are to be secured because of the trees. These are the restrooms down near the stage, again, not working. And now we're heading to the actual back of house or the actual stage where you'll see open to the elements, so any and everything has found their ways to nesting in the staging area. Black mold growing in the manager's office backstage. Countertops loose from the walls, outdated furniture.
Ms. Smoot, are you still speaking? Ms. Smoot?
Yes.
Are you still speaking, though?
No.
All right, is is there more to for you to present?
Yes, there is more.
All right.
I can pause it. Would you like for me to um fast-forward it a little bit more?
There was just a long stretch of silence, so I I didn't know what was, if you had, if you were talking and we couldn't hear you or.
No, can you can you hear? Are you able to see the video?
Uh, we can see the video.
Are you, can you hear uh Stephen talking?
Oh, we cannot.
Okay.
Is it, would it be possible just to have, we've actually exceeded our ten minutes. I have a, I have a sneaking suspicion that council is gonna suspend the rules to talk about Wolf Creek. Um, is Mister Maxwell available just to speak in person on whatever he's saying in the video?
Um, well, I can, I can give an overview of what he's speaking of, and he's basically stating that the venue itself, there have not been any updates or upgrades to uh spaces such as the restrooms. So um any work that is done will be uh not only repairs but major upgrades, because there haven't been any upgrades since the opening of of the facility. So he's just expounding on that. Let's see here. I can fast-forward, because I wasn't sure if you were able to hear it or not, but um after he talks, we go into uh talking with Mister um Andre Allen. And are you still not able to hear?
We're we're not able to hear. If you want to just give us uh, you want to just give us an update, and I do see.
No problem.
Maxwell, I'm sorry, just, I I do see Mister Maxwell and Mister Allen online, so uh they they are available to help answer any questions should we have any discussion after this.
Okay, no problem. If Mister Allen wants to um to expound on this section of the video um where he's actually explaining um the
Point of Order, Mayor. Um, Mister Adams just said that the time expired, ten minutes for this topic. Um, is, I would like to um move that we do um suspend the ten-minute rule for this particular topic. This has been a hot topic in the city.
And so just as a matter of uh just as a matter of procedure, um a point of order is not a time to make a motion. I do recognize your point of order, and I will entertain a motion to suspend the time limits for this topic. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Row.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
That honor was approved five to one.
Point of, point of order.
Your, yes, Councilwoman Williams.
A motion to limit debate applies only to the discussion of the item that is being presented. So it would not affect the presentation being made. It only affects us and those people who wish to have discussion after the presentation is over.
All right. Uh, your point is recognized. Uh, you have as much time as you need, uh, Miss Smoot, Mister Allen, and Mister Maxwell. Uh, we will limit ourselves to, well, we would have limited ourselves to ten minutes, but it has been um overruled by council. Hearing that point of order, would anyone like to make a motion to reconsider the ten minutes for discussion?
Move to reconsider the ten minutes for discussion.
Unfortunately, voted no, uh, Councilwoman.
Oh, thank you for the correction, Mayor.
Mister Mayor, I would like to move that we reconsider that ten minutes, because I had dropped the question into the chat as well.
Properly moving a second, and just and just for the, just for the benefit of people watching, because we moved through that pretty fast. When someone uh uh, someone who voted in affirmative are the only people that could reconsider, so that is why I had to ask for someone else to reconsider.
Are we in discussion, Mayor?
Has been properly moved and seconded, and I am now going to entertain a motion.
Mayor, discussion. I have my hand up for discussion.
Councilwoman Willis, I am just going to ask you the way to be called on. I mean, you you can keep talking out of turn and talking over people.
Mayor, my hand was up, but you did not recognize me. You were about to take the vote without recognizing me.
We are, we are in the middle of a a motion to reconsider, so I'm going to finish calling the motion. There's been a motion to reconsider limiting the debate for ten minutes. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Councilwoman.
Point of order, Mayor, you did um recognize the second, and then you were about to call for the vote. And that is why I asked for discussion. Thank you for recognizing me. Um. The ten minutes as a whole for discussion. I just want this council because I see four of you all have your hands raised. The ten-minute discussion as a whole means that ten minutes as a whole is all that we're going to get. There are a lot of questions that residents have. There are a lot of questions that you all I know that you all have around this topic. And so that means if one person speaks, they can take up the entire ten minutes. And so I think we need to give uh a little bit more thought to how we're going to do this ten minutes. Are we going to allow each person to speak uh so many minutes twice like we used to to do it, or are we just going to allow ten minutes for discussion?
All right, is there anyone else in discussion on removing the? Seeing none others, I will call for the vote to remove the ten-minute limit for discussion.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral.
Aye.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
May I ask a clarif- a question for clarification? Because the motion on the floor is to reconsider the previous action, not to remove the ten-minute limit for debate. So so Mayor, if you could please clarify what exactly the motion is, so I can make sure that I vote appropriately.
Mister Clerk, what motion are we on right now?
You stated uh for the record that this was a motion to reconsider limiting the debate for ten minutes.
Oh, that's that's not what we understood, Mayor.
No. And Mister Mayor, if I could clarify, because I believe it was my motion that we were trying to vote on.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Now, again, my understanding of the very first motion to limit by Councilmember Williams was per the discussion on the presentation, not the presentations themselves. So I did not want us to go through and try and either rush the current presentation or limit the current presentation. The my understanding was the limit from Councilmember Williams was to limit the discussion, not the entire presentation and the discussion inclusive. And so therefore, when the motion was made to limit the discussion, that's why I came back and wanted to negate that motion, to limit the presentation and the discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian. Um, I think it's clear that we're going to continue the presentation. We're actually not through with the presentation. And that that can be as long as it needs to be. So how about we do this?
So if 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 that if that is a clear understanding, then my vote for that is yes.
So what I'm going to ask, what I'm going to ask right now is about how about we just finish the presentation? And then when we get to the discussion, we can have more debate about how long the discussion is going to be, but how about we let the people get through their presentation? Is that? Would that be all right with everyone?
That's good.
All right, uh, Ms. Uh, Mr. Allen, are you online? Mister Clerk, is is Mr. Allen in the Zoom?
I do not see him in the Zoom, no.
Okay, uh. Well, I'm going to have you go ahead and finish uh uh or 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 say what you can. We'll try and get Mr. Allen in the Zoom. Uh, but go ahead and and please resume, uh, Ms. Smoot.
No problem. So in this um this scene here, he's explaining the importance of making sure that the rider that is provided by whoever is doing an event is clear on what their needs are and making sure that their equipment can interface with all of the electrical outfits that are attached to the stage. He's also explaining how the last event that was done at the amphitheater, which in this case was the graduation ceremonies for Fulton County, required a lot of cabling and wiring. And because of that, because of the tedious nature it takes to set that up, he left the wiring and cabling in place so that whoever else was to come behind to do any type of production can just plug and play. Because the length of the wiring and cabling has to stretch all the way from the stage to that front of house area where we're standing. So he was just explaining that that's what that was, so um that it's set up that way for the next person.
All right, thank you. And I I think that Mr. Allen may be uh in the Zoom now.
Okay.
Hello.
Uh, go ahead.
Mr. Allen, are you are you there?
I am. Can you speak and hear me?
I can um I can pause the video if you if you want to interject or if you want to speak, or I can um continue to move on with the video and if you want to um explain what we're seeing, that's fine as well, not to put you on the spot because I didn't um intend for you to actually have to do anything, so you let me know how you want to proceed.
Uh, if you play the video, I'm here to answer any questions if anyone uh has any.
Okay, all right. Have to keep going back, but so again, we were at front of house. And he was explaining that there is no electricity at front of house, which is why the cabling has to be stretched from the staging area to that front of house. Okay, so we made our way onto the stage where he's explaining about the video walls, essentially the LED screens. And understanding that, again, this is amphitheater and everything is exposed to the elements. The curtains, the uh rafters, the LED screens, everything is exposed to the elements, so they will degrade over time. Uh, and that if one screen isn't functional, all the screens are functional. Go on to the stage where we look at the drapes that need to be severely replaced. They're weather beaten, there are holes in them, and they're actually flameproofed and flame retardant. So a lot of the dusting that you see is actually it um degrading um the flame retardant material that's in the fabric. Uh, can I jump in here? About the sound system and how the rafters are set in such a way so that there are hooks that can extend down and hook on to any lighting or sound systems that can be then hoisted up for sound and lighting.
Corinne?
Yes.
Yes, hi. Uh, I just wanted to, if you could pause the video, uh, just to make a a point about the video wall.
Yes.
That estimate uh did not come out of the air. Uh, it came from the manufacturers of the LED screen uh that I asked to give an estimate if the entire video wall needed to be replaced. Um, so the actual manufacturer gave me uh some numbers uh when we were doing the graduations last year and I was assessing um what needed to be done uh for Wolf Creek. I just wanted to make that clear.
And essentially, that was the the end of that particular video. Again, we just wanted to at least provide a general walkthrough for those who aren't able to physically go out there and see for themselves that for as much as there are things that need to be fixed, there are also things that are in place and fully functional. So I don't want this to leave this presentation uh with anyone feeling like, okay, the place is falling apart. That is not the case, uh, but it definitely needs a little TLC. Um, but uh once that is done, uh, I believe that it could be restored to its former glory, but it definitely needs some work, some upgrades and uh uh some uh cosmetic work. Moving on with the presentation, we have a section for documents and miscellaneous items. So the application itself is hyperlinked. And this will take you to the actual special events application that the City of South Fulton already has in place. But items that need to be added would be the damages and deposit policy and also including insurance requirements. And as I stated before, this form is a hard copy. It's not in Sages, so it definitely would need to be uploaded into Sages so that way it can be filled out as well as um the fees can be collected through that system. In the process of me doing my research on Wolf Creek, I made it uh I made sure to visit comparable amphitheaters. So I visited the Sandy Springs Heritage Amphitheater, uh City Green, which both are in Sandy Springs, and I also visited Mabel House in Astell, and I've also visited the uh amphitheater in Woodstock, the uh Northside Hospital Cherokee Amphitheater, the park at center, city center, and use that as a reference because it is of comparable size to Wolf Creek minus the fixed seats. I hyperlinked that as well so that you'll not only be able to see the layout of that particular venue, but also would be able to see their policy and their fee structure as well. RCS Productions is actually the name of the full-service production a company that services the Sandy Springs Heritage Amphitheater and City City Green. Uh, for those who are familiar with companies like Live Nation, uh, they actually are the uh operations management uh company that works with the Lakewood Amphitheater. And um they do everything from booking, ticketing, and management of that particular facility. RCS Productions does similar work, uh, but the uh Sandy Springs uh municipality only allows them to do the production, the full-on productions for outside entities. They actually handle the concessions. So this is an example of a company that actually will do ticketing, or they might do the actual talent booking, or they might do the talent booking and the ticketing, and then the city will handle concessions. So depending on the event will determine what uh what responsibility they would uh or tasks that they would take on for that particular event. That is hyperlinked as well, so you'll be able to go and see the types of events that they put on. They have booked events at various amphitheaters throughout the state and uh have booked talent from Gladys Knight and the Pips to Journey, The Grateful Dead to Duran Duran. So they have a a wide uh range of talents that they've booked. For city-sponsored events, and again, these are just recommendations. The uh functional months are April through October, and that's all of spring, summer, and the beginning of fall through October, so the warmer months. And it's recommended that council members uh each have one event per quarter, and these are low-cost to no-cost, non-revenue generating events. That applications be submitted no later than thirty days of the event date. And that events over the one-per-quarter limit are subject to the same fee structure as other events. So essentially what that is, that's twenty-four City of South Fulton events, low-cost or non-revenue generating events. And again, this is just a recommendation. Taking into consideration that city council members also have lives and also have full-time jobs, this particular structure will allow for a reasonable amount of events that they could plan. Continuing on with recommendations for city-sponsored events, here are some ideas of low-cost, no-cost City of South Fulton events, which includes Screen on the Green movie nights, maybe a bi-weekly or monthly food truck village, farmer's market or grown local slash made local bazaar. Uh, perhaps sell memberships, which is something that these Sandy Springs Heritage um amphitheater they do, they sell memberships for free or discounted admissions to events. And they do meet and greets with the artists, and they do wine tastings, and that's just a a limited example of the list of things that they do for the residents. And then monthly signature events, such as a Gospel for Sundays or Blue Sundays or Indie Saturdays, which would um be beneficial to the City of South Fulton, considering all of the independent artists and local artists that we have here. Recent event requests, and this is uh, I don't think this is an exhaustive list, but most of the requests that have come through have come through via email to Parks and Rec. And um they came through to uh Travis Landrum, who was the former director of Parks and Rec, so things were coming to him, and then they were uh sent to various people. So um this is a list, but I don't think this is an exhaustive list. But the back-to-school uh event, which is, I believe, a Fulton County event, which is I think slated for August thirteenth, this this weekend. We have a concert request. I have no additional details on what this concert request is, but October eighteenth was a request. The community yard sale, and that is Councilmember Gums' annual event, annual signature event. The Fast Enough 5K, which uh they are requesting for October twenty-second, a voter rally. No additional details was provided for that. That's uh been requested for October twenty-ninth. The Atlanta Track Club and the Haitian American Festivals were two events that were requested for next year. So this is after the December thirty-first deadline for the lease. So again, we did not make any determination or decision on any of these events. And we did communicate uh exclusively and implicitly with the Atlanta Track Club and the Haitian American Festival because those events were requested for next year, that we told them that we would have to wait to make any type of decision or to inform them of how to move forward with this because of the twenty twenty-three date. And then there's a cute red panda, and that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, but before we go to discussion, I do just want to ask, is there any additional um information that either Mr. Maxwell or Mr. Allen wanted to provide?
I have nothing additional to add.
All right, uh, hearing nothing. All right, now we're going to go back to this debate about how long this conversation is going to be. I will, uh, we're going to start fresh. I will entertain a motion. Um. Currently, there is on the floor a correct me, please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mister Clerk, are we currently limited to ten minutes or not? Where are we?
Actually, the last vote that was taken uh was approved uh to to reconsider the ten minute. So that was approved uh five to one.
Okay, all right, so uh in the queue, I have.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Willis.
Um, there was confusion around that vote, and I don't think majority of us want to limit our discussion to ten minutes. Some of us voted thinking we were suspending the ten-minute discussion.
Mi- Mister Clerk, to eliminate all confusion, what did we go on and where are we? That's that's what I just asked, but if you will go over that one more time.
Yeah, there was there was confusion about that. Uh, the motion that I recorded was a motion to reconsider limiting the debate for ten minutes, so that motion uh on the floor was approved, so therefore, there was no, there's no limitation currently on debate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for clarifying.
Everyone clear? There's no limitation, except that we we do have ten minutes ironically before our zoning hearing uh starts, but we can. uh starts, but we can start late. Uh so anyway, in the queue, I have Councilman Reeves. Councilman Reeves. Going once, going twice. All right, next in the queue, I have Councilwoman Gums.
All right, uh thank you for recognizing me. And um Miss, I do wanna thank you all for putting this presentation together. I know this is something that a lot of the residents have been asking for, so it's exciting to see that we've gotten some information back. So I do have a a couple of questions. Um first, I wanna ask, are we ready to take any applications? And if we aren't, if so, do y'all have a timeline as to when?
We are ready to accept applications. Um our concern is just about the facility itself, being able to take applications and making sure that if we commit to having an event, that the facility will be able to support it.
Okay. Um also too, you you mentioned that this is a paper process. Um what do, will we have a repository where these applications will be held or anything of that nature?
So currently, the applications are being submitted as PDF documents to the Community Development Department. Um so uh Ms. Mosley has been the recipient of the documents. Uh but again, um it's not in Sages and can easily be um put into Sages um and would eliminate the shuffling of of papers.
Okay, and the process for these events, they'll still go through pretty much the same approval process um and confirmation of dates, just like any other zoning or permit process? What like, what's the process for approval? Who's approving?
Um and it's my understanding that this this would be strictly administrative, so it would be through the city manager's office. And um once the application has been reviewed and the documentation, that is, the supporting documents have been um all supporting documents have been submitted, that it would then be sent to uh the Community Development Department for the actual permit.
Okay. Now also too, did, I I know you all put a lot of stuff out there. Did you all compile how much the total amount of repair would be for the amphitheater to be in good uh running condition?
No, we have not compiled um a total list. Uh that is the the sixty-eight-hundred-dollar uh proposal that Atlas uh submitted was again, was just an estimate, estimate for the proposal, but they are going to do a walkthrough, and that full walkthrough will give a uh more comprehensive um report of all of the repairs and uh upgrades that would need to be done.
Okay. Uh yeah, I had missed that in the earlier discussion. And uh for the, I guess, the council event, are we, in some other cities and other municipalities, they go through a process of bringing those on the agenda and the council approving a calendar or approving the event prior? Uh is that something that we are looking into doing?
To my understanding, I believe the city manager was uh saying that that would not be the case, but um this will be at the discretion of of council, how you want to proceed. For instance, if the events are, you know, over, you know, a thousand people, that that might be uh that that council may want to vote on, so there can be a policy in place, uh depending on the number of estimated, a number of attendees would determine whether or not it would need to take a vote, if it's going to uh cause any type of um impediment of traffic or any stress to the surrounding community.
Okay. Um I I I'm full of questions, but my last question would be, so for the ground maintenance, we're spending eight thousand dollars a month on ground maintenance, or is that just uh a number that we've thrown out there? We're actually spending this amount of money to manage Wolf Creek grounds, eight thousand dollars a month?
Yes, and if um if uh Stephen Maxwell, if he is uh on this uh on this meeting, he may be able to speak even uh further to that, but that is how much we are spending a month to keep the grounds.
Is Mr. Maxwell available to expand? I guess uh Miss, Mr. Tom, or if you want to expound on that?
Councilmember Gums, is is the question, are we actually spending approximately eight thousand a month on the ground maintenance?
Yes, is that for cutting grass, landscaping, eight thousand dollars a month?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Once, once we signed the agreement to take over, that responsibility fell to the City of South Fulton. So we started to cut the grass, and as you know, we are currently in growing season. So that number potentially could be reduced in the months of, you know, the winter months, but right now it is eight thousand dollars a month.
Okay, um. All right, uh I would love to see uh some information on that, if you all can kinda share uh what expenses and where that uh budget lied. I will yield to my colleagues so that I have some time to answer some questions as well.
All right, next is Councilwoman Raul.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. A couple of questions. Um um I think I heard outlets made assessment. Did you say that that total amount was sixty-nine hundred? Miss, Miss.
We're talking about the sixty, the sixty-eight-hundred um for the walkthrough and the assessment?
Uh huh.
Um yes, so sixty-eight-hundred for the walkthrough and assessment by Atlas.
Is that like, you know, the repairs to the restrooms, those kind of things?
Yes.
Okay, um I also saw where Fulton County had money budgeted. Um even though it was minimal for this year, have we had any conversations? Are we planning to have conversations? Because right now it's still under them. Um you know, while it may not be a lot, some of those things, whether it's painting and, you know, the black box rooms or any of that, that it could be used for something, cuz they do have a facilities department at the county. And so before we get to the point of making those transitions, we should, I hope, ask for uh some of those basic maintenance issues to be addressed, uh or particularly items that are are damaged.
Um so, I'm sorry. So um so so to your point, the uh the walkthrough, again, is just a uh facilities condition assessment. So it's just for them to, the sixty-eight-hundred is just for Atlas to do an assessment of the condition of the facility. And then they will provide us with a full report fifteen days later that will give a full-on itemization of the things that need to be done with the costs associated with those repairs. Um I've just been informed that uh Martha Anderson um has been in contact with Fulton County and has requested um the information that you you you're asking about uh on several occasions to no avail.
Hmm, okay. Um and then uh Mr. Allen. Um I'm assuming he was the city's contractor to help when we did the graduations. Is he there to look at what our technical needs are going forward? Can you explain that relationship a little bit better? I'm just not aware. It was just the first time, so I'm I'm just trying to understand. I know he's looking at or has given some estimates on replacing some things that need to be uh replaced to get us at optimal operations. Is he a consultant or wh- what role does he play in helping us to figure out how to move forward with uh the amphitheater?
Well, uh for now, I am simply here um as a, as a request. I I am not under contract uh with the county or or the city. Um I do have a wealth of knowledge because I opened Wolf Creek back in two thousand eleven.
Okay.
We installed all the major systems, and because that word has gotten around, the question is, well, what do we need to do next? And I've just been assisting uh the mayor and Corinne as they need.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh I don't think I have any other um just uh pressing questions at this time. Um I would hope the video presentation, since we didn't get to hear it, if it could be sent to council, so we can try to hear the whole presentation, that would be helpful.
Yes, I will um send this out to everyone, and also um to be clear, on the presentation, the first five minutes of the presentation, there was no voiceover. I uh did that intentionally so the focus could be on just the facility itself, and I was talk, speaking over that, and it's only at the point in the presentation where you see Mr. uh Maxwell and Mr. Allen, where you'll hear them actually speaking to the the issue at hand.
And and then one last thing, I just wanna say, before we take any, I think we should convert and put this process in Sages so that it's as user-friendly, outward-facing as possible, and like you said, we can collect the fees that uh I just think, you know, this is twenty-twenty-two, we shouldn't be doing paper if we don't have to. It just does, that makes sense to me. And also, um what I heard today in terms of the process is not my understanding of how we previously routed special events, applications, cuz I thought all of them had to be reviewed by the police department and and maybe even fire, if I recall previously, to address those issues that you raised about size, traffic, those kind of things. I don't think we should take that out of the queue, so um I just wanted to go on record and say, and making sure whatever our process is, we have our public safety um staff looking at it from all perspectives. Um I just think it's really uh important.
All right.
Thank you.
Dr. Raul, uh Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. Over the years, we have seen a lot of mess come out of um Wolf Creek, a lot of, you know, allegations of improprieties, a lot of allegations of um some elected officials getting involved with the business of Wolf Creek um in ways they should not have. Uh I'm concerned that um there was a comment that uh Mr. Allen was doing an assessment at the request of the mayor. And um I don't know if he misspoke, but uh I just want to make sure that our requests um or any day-to-day operations requests concerning Wolf Creek to keep us all out of trouble, that it goes through the city manager's office. And if it's anyone that needs to come in and make any assessments or do anything for Wolf Creek, we make sure that the person who is hired to do so is doing it, and that is the city manager. I also wanna make sure that um we are following our procurement policies and guidelines. Um I'm just a little concerned that, you know, I understand that this facility has history, but we need to make sure that proper solicitations are put out, uh we're following procurement policies. Um for one, um Mrs. Uh I, there was something that was, it's seventy-five dollars to rent the amphitheater. Did I hear that right, or was I wrong? Is that what was proposed?
That was the application fee?
Um I would like us to look at that a little further. This, this is an amphitheater, a huge amphitheater that has the capacity to seat about five thousand people uh or more. I just think that we need to look at maximizing the dollars, where we can maximize dollars. It should not be readily accessible and available for anybody to get access to this amphitheater, especially with the amount of money that we're gonna have to uh put into it to bring it up to par. Um we're looking at possibly millions of dollars, so it shouldn't be easy for somebody just to submit an application for seventy-five dollars and then get access to this amphitheater. Um also, um do you know how long it's gonna take to bring this facility up to standard?
The facility conditions assessment um that Atlas uh is willing to uh provide will determine um how long it would take for the facility to be up in uh operational, to the capacity to uh accommodate any large-scale events such as a concert. And again, the seventy-five dollars is just the application fee, and that's the application fee across the board for any special events. Um but that's not for the actual rental of the space.
And uh if I could just uh make a comment um about my involvement uh with Wolf Creek. Um I am here as a, as a longtime friend of the city, and uh I have not, I haven't charged for my services, so there is no impropriety there. It's simply, I have a wealth of knowledge from the past that I'm sharing uh with the council uh at this point, and uh answering uh answering questions that you may have. Um I don't think I need to uh, you know, receive payment to just share knowledge. And I have a, I have a love for Wolf Creek, uh and I just wanna see it do well, no matter whose hands it's in. So um now, if there's an opportunity for a a type of consultation where there is, you know, where I have to bid for it, I've had to bid on Wolf Creek in the past uh for production services, and that's, that is a, that is a process I'm used to going through.
Um thank you, Mr. Allen, for your comment. Um I did not insinuate that, and and didn't intend to insinuate that you violated any procurement policies, but what I did specifically state that um anything that is requested of you should come directly from the city manager, because that person is responsible for honoring our, um for running our day-to-day activities. So that should comes, it should not be from any council person, it should not come from the mayor, it should come directly from the city manager. With that being said, I have further questions. Um um the, how long, you said you don't know how long it's gonna take to bring the standard, br- bring the facility up to standard? Mrs. Uh Karen?
Yes.
Okay. Um and the seventy-five dollars is just the application fee, and you were looking up to see how much it was gonna cost to, for somebody to rent the amphitheater. Did you find that, or do you know that cost?
Yes, in the presentation for this fee structure, we had five thousand.
Five thousand dollars, okay. And um do you know when we are anticipating putting out an RFP uh for any productions or uh any work for any construction work that needs to be done? For example, um you mentioned that we're gonna have to get the lighting um fixed, the the screen, jumbo screens fixed. Do you have any idea when we will put out a RFP for that work to be done?
Um at this point, we do not. Um again, we're working on uh first doing the facility uh conditions assessment of the uh basic uh maintenance for working toilets and and hot, hot water. Um so we were looking at doing it incrementally, um but once we get a list of all the things that need to be done and can provide a budget for that and 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 uh the costs associated with those repairs, and then we can move on to um any AV uh items that need to be addressed.
Um so if we're gonna have to put out a RFP to get any of this done, I just would caution us going forward that we just be mindful about, um you know, asking, just, we just don't need, we need to make sure that the process is fair and equitable. And so I would have, me prefer for the RFP to go out, somebody would have been awarded the the work, and then the presentation come to council instead of vice versa. Um I I just, I'm just a little uncomfortable, uncomfortable right now. Um, we all care about Wolf Creek. I mean, this region care about Wolf Creek. This council is constantly attacked that we don't have this facility open. I'm ready for this facility to be open tomorrow, but we have to dot our i's and cross our t's. Um, another thing that we have to consider, the chief just put out that we do not currently in the city in our alcohol policy, we don't have a bring your own bottle in the city. So we have to consider if we're going to allow this to happen at only this facility uh um for people to, when they, we do have start, when we start having concerts, uh we're going to allow people to bring their own bottle like they did in the past. Um, we have to also put security plans in measure, um and play, I mean, put security plans in place. Um, I mean, I I will hope before anybody have an event that they have to submit a security plan as a part of uh their request for our police department to review and vet, to make sure we have proper security. In order to use this facility, will a permit have to be obtained?
Yes, a permit would need to be obtained and as a part of the application process, which I hyperlink in the uh presentation that I will send out after um after a discussion of all of the information that you're requesting is actually a part of the application process. So for any safety, a safety plan has to be submitted for um any um alcohol, if there's going to be any road closures, uh the need for EMS to be on the premises, all of those issues are addressed in the application and the applicant has to indicate um what they'll um they'll need and have to provide a site plan for that.
Okay, um and I'm sorry if I'm being redundant with my questions, but we didn't receive this report prior to the meeting or any supporting documentation and it would have been helpful to get it. Um, so I apologize if my, if I'm being a little redundant. Um, I just would ask that you uh go to the Fulton County website and uh go to the auditing department, the full audit of Wolf Creek. Uh, their findings, uh and the full audit report is out there, um posted. Uh, I'll find it. I sent it to Ms. Sally Jones and I just want to avoid those, those issues that previously occurred at Wolf Creek. I want this facility to be uh game changer for the region. I want to make sure that we are thoughtful and deliberate in our considerations. I want to make sure our procurement policies are fully followed and um I do think that um all, we need to have a calendar of events that has to come before this council for anything that happens at Wolf Creek, to include council events. So I just would ask that you take that into consideration. Um, I think, I mean, thank you for wanting, for allowing us, the council, to have an event there quarterly. But um I just think that we need to have a calendar of events and this council approve what happens at this amphitheater because it is going to cost a lot of money to maintain, to bring it up to par. And uh we want to make sure we bring it online right and we need to bring it online as soon as possible. And I do not, I want to be going back and forth with Fulton County about what we want to force them to pay for and what we're not going to force them to pay for. If it's our facility, let's move forward and get it done. I don't want to belabor this any longer because the red, the residents are ready for this facility to open and they are ready for concerts and they are ready for it to be entertained.
All right, thanks, Councilwoman uh Williams.
Thank you, Mayor, but I had lowered my hand. Um, I have nothing.
All right, oh, all right, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Is the queue working?
And try to uh uh get these, these, get through these questions and comments so that we can start our, our zoning hearing. Um first off, I I do just want to clarify for the record, I want to thank Mr. Allen for his service. As he stated, he opened Wolf Creek and ran nearly every production in Wolf Creek and at Southwest Art Center uh for the last nine years. So uh and he has offered his, his, his technical expertise for free at this point. So as we as we think about developing a Bureau of Cultural Affairs, I thought it would be helpful to have the people that have actually been running the program since before we were even a city to just be involved in the information gathering process. So I did refer him to uh City Manager Jones, which is how he ended up in the video with Ms. Smoot. Uh, Ms. Smoot, to be clear though, you stated that we are ready to, and 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 correct me if I'm wrong, but you stated that we are ready to take applications for the events, for events now, but the facility itself may not be ready. Is is that what I heard you say?
That is correct. So we can accept applications, those who want to submit applications. But what we have been informing those who have been submitting applications is that we are in the process of deciding how we want to move forward with the, the venue and um as it stands, any events that they currently see are events that are uh city or county sponsored uh and that we will let them know um as soon as we have these meetings, including the work session meetings on how we will proceed. So I did not want to deter anyone from submitting applications, but uh did not make any uh plans to make any approvals until it was clear um by the city manager and by council on how they would want to proceed.
Okay, thank you. As long as we're making multiple disclaimers that that uh a- and and for those, could you bring those events back up on the screen if 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 you can? I don't know if that's hard for you to pull up uh that quickly, but you 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 listed about four or five events. There weren't budgets for those events? Who would be responsible for presenting the budget for those events? Because I'm assuming, you know, even if we call them city council events, right, they still cost money for, you know, outside of just the people uh doing whatever they're doing on stage and whoever they bid out to do that. There are, there are like security costs, traffic control costs, maintenance and cleanup costs. So who, what what is the process for for those people that are in the queue now to provide a budget to pay for all of those things? And then how do they liaise with our police and fire departments to like come up with those budgets?
So it was my understanding that um the person who's putting on the event would be responsible for procuring their security, for procuring their uh their site plan would be uh in such a way where they will be explaining how they will be laying out their event. It is their responsibility to pay for any fees associated with procuring any type of uh security, uh the fees associated with utilizing our police department, they would have to adhere to those, those fees, that fee structure uh for having a a fire engine on site, they will have to adhere to the fee structure associated with that. Uh, so the onus falls on the part of those who are putting the event on.
I got you. And so, and so a- a- assuming that this is a city park, that's, that's the argument that we made, you know, before. This would follow the same uh procedure as if someone was having an event in Welcome All Park or Old National Park, anywhere that they would have to get the, the sign off from the police and fire chief on their security plans and they would get the, the budgets for those?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Atlas has uh, Atlas is, is this six, eight hundred dollar bid or whatever, they're, they're, they're going to uh give us a a budget for the maintenance, correct?
Correct.
So besides the maintenance, do we have an estimated total operating budget for Wolf Creek? Have we developed an annual operating budget for that?
We have not.
Okay, and who, who would be preparing that? What, where? I guess where in the O R chart are 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 you proposing that Wolf Creek would fall under?
Um, currently it is under Parks and Rec.
Okay, so that would be, that, that operating budget, would that be something that we would see in the Parks and Rec's presentation for F Y twenty twenty-three?
Um, I cannot speak to that. Um, Don, Mr. Toms, would you be able to speak to that?
I I would. Wolf Creek is an enterprise fund, so it would be completely separate from Parks and Rec. It'd be a independent revenue and expenditure fund.
All right, so there will, during our presentations for the F Y twenty twenty-three budget, there will be a, a presentation about the total operating budget on, from the city's perspective for Wolf Creek?
Yes.
Okay, and we, we talked about, I I I heard some conversation about bidding out um the, the running of Wolf Creek. The, a- am I correct in understanding that we would have two staff people, but that we would bid out, what, what, what are we bidding out exactly? Are we bidding out concessions? Are we bidding out a booking manager to, to run the facility and book all of the events? Or are we just doing separate bids for each event?
The, the events as requested for those large shows, the events for the concerts, that, that is part of the RFP for someone to actually book, run and ticket the events. The individuals that are proposed as employees, um every facility needs a maintenance person plus, you know, contracted help to do the grass and things like that. And then the individual would be the, the person that would answer the phone, schedule for the additional events and also direct people towards anyone who would be handling any of the large bookings. So, you know, if there is a big show, whoever that that named artist is that would, would bring full capacity crowd, that would not be run, that'd be run by that third-party vendor that would be part of that RFP.
Would there, would, would there be a, a, would there be a separate RFP for concessions?
It would be my recommendation with council approval that that it's a turnkey operation. The person is paying the city on whatever that disclosed fee is and then they, they run it all. I think it gets a little, I, I know there's models that do it every single way, so there, there's definitely more than one option here, but for those large-scale events, it would be my recommendation that it be a turnkey operation.
All right, do we have, uh, do we have a timeline for uh letting this RFP and closing the RFP process?
Currently, we do, I'm sorry.
No, go, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Smoot.
No, you, you can go ahead. I was going to say currently um do not um for the purpose of doing events at Wolf Creek, we do not.
There, there are some draft RFPs. I, I think part of the due diligence process was the cost of bringing everything up to scale and presenting that to council to, to vote on, vote on it because without the um, the monitors and everything brought up to speed at the cost presented, if council was not going to approve that, it'd be very difficult to then bring in the event coordinator to, or the uh RFP to do the rest. So we want to one, make sure that there was support for that, that dollar amount that was presented because that would be part of the, the budget.
All right, I think, and I, I, I think we'll have conversations about that in the budget here, um in the budget hearings. I, I would just ask for, for a little more clarity, both for, both for vendors who are eager to have events here and residents who are eager to attend events here. Like, I, I think that we just need to get a little more clarity about a realistic timeline. I, I would venture to say, uh, if we've not let the RFP yet, if we've not approved the budget or budgeted for or made the actual um expenditures, it sounds like we wouldn't really be ready to get started doing things until March. Is that, that's the, 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 the next schedule is March, it's March through October, correct?
Uh, for the smaller events, you, you certainly could do them right now and and Corinne had the calendar showing that there are small events. The large-scale events, it's fair to say there's a lot of work to bring the facility back up to host those large-scale events, but the smaller events can be done um currently.
All right, um, and uh I'm almost at eight. Uh, but the, the, the operating months, I just want to be clear, they were March through October?
I, I do recall that from the presentation. Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, tha- that's right, Ms. Smoot?
Yes.
Okay.
It was essentially six months.
Six months, I think that's eight months, March, April, May, June, July, September, October, seven months. Uh, so so twenty-four city, a possibility of twenty-four city-sponsored events in seven months, that just sounds like a lot of blackout dates. What is? How, how does, how does, we don't have to figure it out now, but I thi- I think there has to be some kind of um discussion about it, on, on whoever we, you know, whoever wins the contract, whoever is awarded the contract, I'm sure that they are going to have some concern about the, the control of the calendar and how many days, we just have to be very um I think we have to be very strategic and I think thirty days notice probably will not be enough. I have been pushing for years now for us to build a master calendar for the city and I think that uh Wolf Creek is going to uh, uh planning a calendar for Wolf Creek is, is going to force us to do just that. Um Lastly, Chief Meadows uh di- did note that we might have to amend our alcohol ordinance for bringing our own, uh for people to do a B Y O B event. But I, I thought, and 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 whether the attorney or the clerk or or anyone can, can address this, I thought that either in our alcohol ordinance or our parks ordinance, we did provide for alcohol to be allowed at events subject to a vote of council. Is that true? And if it is true, is that, are you saying that that is still in itself not sufficient to cover what might happen at Wolf Creek?
I don't think it would be sufficient, Mayor. I think it would require uh Wolf Creek to actually have its own liquor license. Uh, unless you wanted, unless you all wanted to take it on a case-by-case basis. Sometimes event organizers will come in and they'll go under the umbrella of of that um particular liquor license, but I would kind of refer to Ms. Smoot under those circumstances on how she uh envisioned that taking place. Or you could issue a special events liquor license permit under those circumstances.
All right, well, well, thank you so much for that. I uh uh, those, those are, those are the end of my questions. It sounds like we have a lot, a lot more discussion to be had. Uh, I look forward to hearing about this RFP process as well and seeing some more complete budget information and timelines. I, I, I will close, and I do see uh uh Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. Um, I, I think, I, I want to make sure that one of the one of, one of the issues that we had previously in the county with Wolf Creek and and Councilwoman Willis has talked about it was that there was, there was this sort of double standard for what happened at Wolf Creek. And I think that we have the opportunity now to take a look at all of our processes for special events, for creating a calendar, for our parks, for our, for our, our licensing and all of these things. This is, this is really a great opportunity for us to come up with something that is comprehensive and cohesive uh for, for all of our processes through, throughout the city in it, in as much as possible to try and, you know, cut down on some of the bureaucracy that we have um in terms of booking and and scheduling events. And with that, uh, I will recognize Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. I appreciate that. Mr. Toms, because you did mention this and that uh when the mayor asked which budget would this come under on the presentation, you said the enterprise fund. Uh, so for, to amplify the public, could you explain what the enterprise fund is and what they're going to actually do for Wolf Creek?
Yes, yes, sir. The city has several enterprise funds set up and these are what we consider self, self-sufficient funds and we did set up a Wolf Creek Fund last year. And that is the fifty-five five-five-five uh fund for Wolf Creek. And it, it's basically set up that whatever revenue is brought in is spent and it should, it should uh be self-sufficient. Um, that's, that's how it's set up. A lot of your water, uh sewer, utility type of funds are set up that way.
Correct. Now, wasn't there supposed, or is there in that ordinance that for Correct, though, wasn't there supposed or is there in that ordinance that for uh, the enterprise to have uh, personnel under that to operate enterprise fund?
We we will be putting the personnel in that fund that that we have listed. And currently, all our charges that are being charged to Wolf Creek, which right now is the maintenance of the yard, and we also had to take out an insurance policy that is being um, expensed to the enterprise fund.
Okay, good deal. And one thing of Ms. Mood and uh, uh, Mr. Times is that I would like the to be for to be considered uh, when it comes to the concessions of vendors could um, partner with the nonprofits within the technical boundaries of the city of South Fulton. Uh, as they can run the concessions and receive a percentage of those sales uh, for their organizations. Uh, they can do this by whatever process that they uh, feel comfortable that's fair and balanced to that. And then I just have to ask this question, uh, because I get this all the time is, uh, will y'all be bringing the old school concert series back? So, that's it. Thank you.
All right, uh, seeing no further uh, items in the queue. Mr. Clerk, I'm going to go ahead and ask for you to uh, I will really, I think we're at the end of this agenda. Uh, we had closing comments, but I'm gonna ask if we could just postpone those. Um, and go right into the zoning.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to recess the work session.
Oh, I think we're, I think we're done, that we we have.
We had, we had executive session still.
I move that we recess uh, work session and postpone uh, council comments.
Sure move.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, please call the roll, the vote, sorry.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rile?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
The work session is recessed at six thirty-one PM.
All right, uh, can we go ahead and open the zoning hearing?
Okay. Roll call for the six PM alcohol zoning public hearing. The Honorable Catherine F. Rile, District One.
Yes, present.
The Honorable Carmody to Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J. C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Cory A. Reeves, District Five.
The Councilman for.
And the Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Please sit on the first item.
First item is a public hearing to consider Z twenty-one dash zero zero one five seventy-two forty-five Bussata Drive, seventy-three twenty-nine Bussata Drive, zero Bussata Drive, twenty-two thirty-four Bussata Road, twenty-two twenty-four Bussata Drive, as a request to rezone from AG one and C one to R five for the purpose of constructing eighty-five single-family fee simple homes. This is located in District Seven. This case was first heard on June fourth. I'm sorry, June fourteenth at the special call meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation from uh, Ms. Keefe or anyone in?
Mr. Mayor, Council.
I I I believe uh, Staff Mr. Hall is uh, on the call.
I am indeed on the call. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are prepared to uh, give the presentation that was presented back in June. Mr. City Clerk, can you assist me with the presentation?
Yes, forthcoming. Mr. Hall should be on the screen.
It is. Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Uh, and and again, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and to the great citizens of the city of South Fulton. This is a request for rezoning. Fisher uh, is requesting, as was indicated earlier, a rezoning from AG one agriculture and C one, there are two zoning designations for the four parcels that are involved, to R five for the purpose of developing a single family detached residential subdivision. Um, as a part of some ongoing discussions with the community, uh, the proposal for the applicant has reduced the number of single family housing units from ninety-five to eighty-five units. As it relates to the comprehensive plan, the future land use uh, is split between two land use designations. Primarily, the site is suburban to neighborhood, but there is a portion of the site which will, which you will see shortly that has been identified as community live work. Out of the four parcels, three are in compliance with the future land use. Um, if this zoning uh, change is granted, a future land use change will be necessary for the com- community live work portion of the site. Um, by way of um, geography, this site is located, um, as was mentioned earlier, in District Seven. Uh, currently, to the south and to the west are some uh, single family subdivisions on small lots. Um, and again, this illustration shows the four lots that are involved with the proposed rezoning. As it relates to the zoning map, um, as you see, the indications of AG one on the left uh, primarily consumes the three or the four parcels. There is a small section um, in the southwest corner um, of one of the parcels that's zone Z one. Um, and then the applicant's request is to change the entire um, project area to R five as it relates to the Fulton County twenty thirty-five future land use map. And just by way of explanation, um, the city adopted its comm plan, its comprehensive plan in December twenty twenty-one. Uh, until that time, we were using the Fulton County twenty thirty-five plan. And so this plan, because it was submitted before our adoption of our new comprehensive plan illustrates that um, primarily the three of the four parcels are zoned suburban to neighborhood with just a small portion in the north in the southwest corner um, as a future land use desi- designation as community live work. Um, so as was indicated earlier, the site is in compliance with the future land use plan. Um, and this kind of illustrates that this is a layout of the proposed um, small lot subdivision, um, single family homes. I will say that the applicant in his presentation will get more into detail related to the amenities as well as the overall layout for the project. Next slide. Uh, this slide shows illustrations of what a typical a single family house will look like. Notice the uh, brick um, exterior structures as well as the front um, loading garages, uh, and then the um, accents that are are featured to kind of give each house a unique and distinct uh, look. Uh, this particular project has been deferred um, a number of times at Planning Commission. Uh, six to be exact, or five to be exact, and then on May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, uh, the Planning Commission uh, recommended to niall. Um, next slide. As it relates to some of the changes and some of the conditions that have been made since the initial application was submitted, and again, that was back, um, I imagine in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty. Um, the front facades um, were negotiated to be brick or stone. Um, there is a mandatory HOA requirement for all areas owned and common. Um, and this is critical for ongoing maintenance issues. Um, it it's just important to make sure that there is a HOA that can take care of of elements that are outside of individual property owners. Um, there were some additional conditions that were added related to uh, when the completion of faith of amenities would be done. Um, so in the sense of certificate of occupancies, uh, the first thirty-four, within the issuance of the first thirty-four, phase one amenity has to be completed. If not, no more CFOs will be issued until that is completed. And then there is a next uh, level, and that is at the point of fifty-nine fifty-nine issuance of certificate of occupancies, phase two amenity has to be complete. And this is so that uh, new families moving into this proposed project will be um, allowed to enjoy the amenities uh, that are being built and that the developer will not build the amenities at the end of the construction phase of the project. Another uh, important element, and in light of um, what is scheduled to be passed by Congress related to the environment, each home shall have one electrical vehicle charging station. Uh, side entry garages are required on corner lots. Um, you will notice in the previous illustrations that uh, they had uh, front lot uh, garages, but on all um, corner lots, side entry garages will be required. Lots larger than nine thousand square feet will have the appropriate turning radius uh, to make sure that you can uh, get in and out. Um, and then in terms of um, some activities that will be required prior to uh, the issuance of a land disturbance permit. Uh, a sewer capacity report must be submitted and approved by Fulton County as well as a hydrology report and erosion control plan must be submitted and approved uh, to the city of South Fulton before any of the CFOs can be issued. So, this, it, these two particular activities, the hydrology report and the erosion control plan must be submitted before we issue any single, any certificate of occupancies. And then finally, requirements for a six-foot-high privacy fence uh, near the rear of lots thirty-eight and seventy-six, and that is just because of the proximity to existing residential developments in the area. And I believe that concludes Staff's presentation. Um, I will uh, stop here and then turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'm going to now open the uh, public hearing. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have any applicants for or against this item?
Yes, uh, the applicant is present on the line and has a presentation, and then uh, following the applicant, we do have uh, two uh, citizens who have uh, submitted uh, comments in opposition.
Awesome. All right, well, let's begin with the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council, Thomas Hughes, representing the applicant. Um, are we able to have the present, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Adams. So I'll spend most of our time uh, talking about what's new in this presentation. Uh, most of what you heard about the actual project was just presented, so we can go a couple of slides. Um, we went over this last time, just basic information about who we are, the type of work that we do. Uh, we go to the next slide, or actually two more slides. Uh, just an example of something that we're currently building, um, workforce for sale housing on top of a grocery store. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we can go to the next one. I believe the next one actually starts to get into the proposed changes. So just a reminder, are you uh, AG ones, C one, uh, consistent with the future land use map? Uh, we can go forward uh, probably uh, three slides or four, excuse me, five slides. Uh, I want to just jump straight to the address site concerns. Perfect. We heard three things in the last conversation. One of them was uh, uh, effects of traffic that will have with the surrounding neighborhood. So we actually went and did a traffic study. Uh, in terms of the site size, the city does not require us to do one. We thought it was important to be able to answer questions around traffic concerns. And I'll let you read the slide, but the the biggest thing I want to point out is that the development actually does not have a a a heavy impact on the surrounding network. And specifically, they recommend us having one deceleration lane, and we've actually committed to doing two. And so we're uh, committing to do more um, to ensure that there's a less congestion on traffic. If we go to the next slide, um, one of the bigger questions was around the pump station. We've had multiple conversations with the community and understand their concerns. Uh, and the biggest concern is us ensuring that we cannot build uh, if the pump station has no capacity. So, not only have we gotten two separate emails from Fulton County, uh, we also recognize that the land disturbance permit process will not allow us to get a permit until we have uh, actual proven that that pump station can withhold us building uh, those sites. And so we've committed to doing a couple of studies as part of that process. And uh, your team has actually also ensured that is written in a way that we cannot proceed with receiving a permit until we have the uh, proof that that uh, pump station will work and hold those eighty-five homes. Uh, we can go for two more uh, brief, I wanted to jump all the way to erosion control, which is a few slides up, please. Perfect. Um, I did, we did follow up. There are really a major concern around short and long-term erosion control. So I had a great conversation with the engineer. There's a pre-construction, during construction, and post-construction around erosion control. So, pre-construction, following the same uh, industry standards, um, silk fences, uh, et cetera. And then uh, amplifying that once you actually start construction. And then once con- construction is complete, based on the way the homes are in the retention plan, you remove uh, erosion. And we also committed uh, as part of our staff condition to ensuring that uh, we're gonna be structuring the gutters from homes that are next to the streams to make sure that the storm was being piped into the uh, the stream bank. So just additional things that we committed to do to ensure that we reduce erosion. Uh, we can go for maybe another slide, uh, send me two more slides. One of the things that came up uh, with the community was the quality of the build. And so we had both conversations and invited the residents out and also sent emails to be able to show um, types of projects. And so we specifically picked Dan Ryan builders because they're familiar with what it means to build in the city of South Fulton. And so you've always seen uh, some examples of what their projects look like. But they have uh, existing projects or existing developments uh, on Ca- Capital Marketplace uh, as well as further north in the city of South Fulton. So, again, we want to be able to reiterate that we are partnering with an existing building, a su- existing builder that is building quality developments in the city. Um, the rest of the slides, we can pretty much go to. If uh, I want to skip forward all the way to the additional developer conditions. All right, thank you. Let's do, I just want to reiterate number two, that we are going to be doing uh, brick or stone uh, facades as well as on the uh, sides and the rear following the uh, the code directions. And so looking at um, uh, uh, cement siding, um, uh, hardy brick, et cetera, uh, hardy plank, excuse me. Uh, if you go to the next slide, really want to uh, call out not just having side garages, but ensuring that there are electric vehicle charges in every garage. Um, and then that last piece that was touched on a lot about the written verification from Fulton County before we actually are able to get a permit, that that lift station can manage those eighty-five homes. And then just want to spend a quick second uh, doubling down on two items on the next slide. The um, number eight is around the phasing of the amenity areas. Uh, so there was a real concern from the residents about us building a bunch of homes and then changing our mind about amenities. And so we committed to ensuring that that doesn't happen by making sure that we phase in the amenities. So that way, we can't finish the project without first building out all the amenities. Uh, and then the last thing, where there was a concern about privacy and blocking off the existing uh, development to the south of us. Uh, and so we committed to building six-foot privacy fences uh, that separate those back lots from the uh, from the neighboring um, subdivision. And so those are the things, in addition to what was read um, earlier, that either A, we committed to do by code, we commit to do based on recommendation and ask of the neighbors, or just the right thing to do. Uh, I actually want to stop there uh, in case there are questions that we want to come back later and to be able to answer.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do you want to go forward with uh, those against? And I'm sorry, can we just mark, uh, can we just note how many minutes are left? And I'm sorry, can we just mark, can we just note how many minutes are left on the clock for the applicant?
Yes, I have three minutes and forty eight seconds left for the applicant.
All right, we're gonna, thank you, we're gonna go to those opposed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, we did receive two comments in opposition. I will read those into the record. The first is from Mr. Alvin Reynolds, who lives on King's Place in District Seven. He states, I'd like to comment on case Z twenty one dash zero one five, the proposed development at Basada Road and Basada Drive. This case has been heard extensively, first in planning and zoning as well as council. The planning commission recommendations were to deny this petition. This development presents several challenges as it is being constructed on and around wetlands. Number one, there will not be adequate or sturdy retention walls to prevent land erosion of the homes that will be built along the wetlands edges. This is not a question of if, but when it happens. As a stream runs down the middle of the proposed site, part of the area off of Basada Drive has flooding issues. Number two, the pumping station that will be used to service the proposed development is in question as the servicing of it was being done once a quarter, even with increasing the pipe size because of the type of things being deposited into it that are not dissolvable. It now has to be done once a month, and with the added homes depositing into it, the same contents, wet wipes, grease, et cetera. This would no doubt increase the strain and discomfort on the homes utilizing it creating environmental issues. Number three, even though a traffic study was conducted, the day and time of the study is not conducive to times when traffic in the area is overflowing from Old National to Camp Valley Road and up from three fourteen highway. There must be a factoring in of the added school traffic that will no doubt have an impact. Number four, the recommendation for this proposed project should be denied based on the above challenges listed, land erosion, environmental, and traffic concerns. End of comment. The next comment is from Mr. Michael Venable, who lives on Montili Circle in District Six. He states regarding Z twenty one dash zero one five, I'm requesting that this petition be denied. The development lacks the infrastructure to be sustainable. First, the area is in a floodplain, floodplain where trees will be clear cut. As you know, from the current climate change issues, this area can clearly be affected. Mitigation measures such as brick, water tables, and masonry siding are being rejected. Second, the subdivision is not being equipped to deal with sustainability issues. There are no active amenities requiring moderate substantial dues to promote a buy-in from the ownership. The probable price range is exactly where investors are marketing current homes as absentee landlord investment property. Real-time listings now in the three hundred thousand dollar range are being marketed. No HOA, essentially no relevant maintenance fee, and closed to the airport for rental. The passive dog park and walking trails would not solve the problem. Camelot should be a wake-up call for this area. Even options to encourage solid non-transient owners such as hardwood flooring, stone countertops, and crown molding are being rejected. Not providing housing diversity with side entry garages and clubhouses forces the needed demographic to the next county. All student, I'm sorry, all studies and policies point to the fact that issues regarding the development have great potential to harm the upward growth and revitalization of the community. A proposal as it exists at the location in the area, socioeconomic climate is not acceptable and must be denied. That's the end of the public comment.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, there was three minutes left on the clock for the applicant. Did you have a rebuttal to any of those?
Sure, I share a few concepts. One around the environmental is we've heard multiple times that it's not about building. It's, well, sorry, the first four months, it was around you're building too many homes. And now it feels like we don't want you to build any. The concerns around environmental and erosion issue that they say are happening right now. If nobody builds, those issues are going to continue. So actually building homes starts to solve those existing erosion issues. The second thing was we actually did offer, it said that we rejected the concept of water tables. We actually offered two foot water tables and residents, particularly Mr. Venable, said, we don't want that. So I actually disagree with us rejecting that potential offer. The third thing is around pricing. We talked about that and actually did a quick analysis on pricing at the last meeting. As we mentioned, our starting price point is in the mid threes at five percent interest rate. That is extremely expensive for investors. Investors start in a two hundred range. The last thing I would say is this is nothing like Camelot. Camelot started as an apartment complex, had an insurance issue that caused them to change over to condos. And so this is, it was never intended to be a for-sale condo building. We are building from scratch with the intent to have for-sale residents, so not really an apples-to-apples comparison. The last thing I would like to be able to say is the I have to trust that the city, Fulton County employs people who know how to do their job. And if they're saying, A, that there is capacity, and they said it at the beginning of this process, at mid twenty twenty one, and they said it a few months ago. And they've also said, just in case we're wrong, we're going to make you test it and you cannot get a permit until you've proven that test to be accurate. And so there, there's nothing that I can give, that the county can give ahead of time to prove, but what they have said is you, we will not be able to build if that lift station does not operate correctly. That's all we have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, I'm going to open it up for council questions or comments. I see in the queue, Councilwoman Morales.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. Couple of quick questions. Are these comments that were received recent? Because they don't seem to address what I heard in terms of the presentation and the staff presentation. Because it seems like the issues they talked about, brick and masonry and all of that have been addressed either in the conditions or based on what Mr. Houston presented. Do we have any, are these from prior meetings?
Yes, Councilwoman Morales, to answer your question, the comment from Mr. Venable was received today. And the comment from Mr. Reynolds was received on Friday.
Okay, is it that they, is it possible that they're not aware of these changes that were presented in a staff recommendation? Or are you not sure?
Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Clerk, I can address that. This is the development. It's a combination of both. You know, to the best of our ability, we try to make sure that when we have disagreements with the community and the applicant and kind of the city being the moderator in this regard, we try to make sure that we bring the parties together, address the issues, and then let everyone know the outcome. So the information that I conveyed in the earlier presentation was available through our updated staff report. But in some cases, we have, we have members of the community who continue to insist on bringing up some comments that have been addressed.
Okay, and just one other question. I saw that the planning commission. Can you give me some insight on the planning commissions? Do they state their reasons? I know in the past, we've seen some of that language. I didn't see it in today's presentation. And it's saying, based on what I heard, this project is compatible with the future land use. So I just wanted a little more insight. If you could share about what issues were raised by the planning commissioner? And if they were raised, have they been addressed with what you presented today?
Councilwoman, indeed, I can. This was actually my first planning commission meeting that I attended. And what I recall, if you notice, kind of going through the chronology of the previous deferrals, there was a lot of concern from the planning commissioners that there needed to be more activities with the community and the applicant to work out specific details. And so that occurred over the course of maybe about six or seven months. I think that the number of deferrals were five deferrals, with the final one being at the end of May. And then at that particular meeting, probably some of the same individuals who left comments for today's public hearing stood in opposition to the project. And I think, you know, just, and this is coming from a person who had been in the city for less than a week. I think the influence of those members of the community sway the decisions of the planning commissioners to ultimately not support the project.
I have no further questions. Oh, no, one more. Erosion. There was a comment, I had mostly everything, but was not clear about the erosion. Does the layout of the subdivision address those issues? Because I did hear that there were, I guess, wetlands on this property and a stream running through it.
Yeah, and I can tell you specifically, just working closely with the engineering division and recently experiencing some rains as it relates to projects currently under construction and having to deal with erosion. I think the applicant mentioned the pre-construction meeting that we require once you get a land disturbance permit that is approved. And then ongoing as a part of that, when you start the construction, our engineering inspectors go out weekly to monitor and notice if there are any erosion activities. So there's only so much that you can prepare for without kind of understanding how the rain amounts are going to occur. But we have a built-in system where we have our inspectors that will go out and do inspections on a weekly basis. And then at the conclusion of the project, we have them to do a complete inspection of the overall project just to make sure that all erosion issues have been addressed. So they put in those mitigation measures kind of at the beginning of the land disturbance permit process, and then they solidify that by having ongoing inspections throughout the construction period.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Willis.
So based on the feedback I'm hearing, what is the main bone of contention from the community?
Councilwoman Willis, I think if I can be frank, and it's something that I've just begun to notice as I'm looking at development overall in the city. There is a small contention of, I think, community residents who may feel that the city is at its point in development. And so some of the same individuals I hear oftentimes say the same thing related to traffic or just related to the proposed densities that developers are coming in, coming in with their applications. What I think you know, and all the elected officials know, and certainly those of us at City Hall know, that with South Fulton being such a large city that has large acreage for development, we are number one on any developers list, particularly in metro Atlanta. You know, we're close to the airport, we're close to downtown, we have good infrastructure. And so these factors make us a prime market and a prime interest for developers. And that combats with maybe some residents wanting to keep the traditional rural nature of the city as it is and not embracing urbanization as we know it occurring in metro Atlanta.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. We don't vote tonight, for one. We don't vote. There's not a possible vote on this until the twenty third. So that's another, what, almost two weeks from now? And so I just were asked that the developer, I sense a little frustration, but just understand that residents matter and what they want in their community does matter. I do know we have laws that we have to abide by, but I would just ask within this next two weeks, if you have the information of the individuals in that area that have concerns, just to try to reach out and come to a meeting of the mind. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. And I agree with Councilmember Willis. Is get with the community that lives in District Seven. And any one of us from District Four, Five, and Six to, if you need help with that, getting some of the residents there, because right now they're unrepresented. And so this, to me, is taxation without representation. And this is one of the things that they should have a voice on and their concerns. And I'm just going to say about the future land use and comprehensive plan, I think that is beholding that they take a look at that as well. Because some things that were requested just doesn't match up to what that plan came out to be. And I'm almost certain the former representative was not for this project. And so, but to say that, it was not going to be voted on tonight, and you do have a couple of weeks to reach out to the community. And I think that should be done. And so, so y'all can flush out all of those intricate details that they have may have missed and may be amenable to as going to go forward. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that that this development, that they did, I think, schedule a couple of meetings with the community because they invited me to participate. And unfortunately, my work schedule would not allow me to be a part of those meetings, but I am aware that they happened and that we also did, I did also have a conversation with them as promised with, you know, Councilmember Sebastian and I offering to help to cover D seven until they have adequate representation. And so I think that I don't know that going back to the community yet again is going to resolve what I think is an impasse between some of our more vocal residents who want things to remain the same and the the forward progress that we are attempting to make in the city. I can tell you that adding an additional deceleration lane is something that I spoke with them about very specifically. And so I'm happy to see that they have incorporated that into the plan that they brought forward this evening. So I don't want us to get caught up in a cycle of attempting to continually go back to residents to try to, you know, add another thing, add another thing, add another thing in the hopes that we're going to make everybody happy. I think that we all know that when it comes to development, there's always going to be people who are not going to be satisfied, no matter what concession you give them. And I do think that, you know, we've come to a point where we need to Um, and I do think that, you know, we've come to a point where we need to, um, make a decision and when it's time for us to vote and move forward um, with getting, um, our developments approved, getting our developments done. And, you know, I would remind everyone, including the public, that things that we say we see in our city hinge on being able to provide the rooftops and the car counts that the businesses want to see so that they can come into the city. Um, and that, and, and if the goal is to become a forward-moving forward progressing city, moving towards a live-work-play model. Um, then I think we have to at some point accept the fact that density has to be in our future um, so that we're able to bring the businesses in that residents are clamoring for. Um, repeatedly saying that they want certain things that we cannot provide until we get the density in place. Thank you.
All right, uh, is there anyone else in the queue? All right, I've got a few, um, I've, I've got a few questions and comments. Uh, well, really, I just have one question, and that is it's around the hydrology study and this, and this watershed issue. Uh, Mr. Hall, could you, could you just take a moment to explain what all is encompassed in a hydrology study?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would be happy to, but I will admit, I am no engineer. Um, but if I just kind of apply my general knowledge, my thought is that um, and I think this is tied to, um, even before construction can start that there has to be a hydrology report along with an erosion control plan that seeks to mitigate any type of runoff, um, on the adjacent parcels and within the development project. And so this is a condition that needs to occur prior to the issuance of building, of any building permits.
Do we know how many years the uh, 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 Mr. Houston is gonna, if Mr. Houston could share his screen, he's going to show the hydrology checklist. Do we know how many years out the hydrology study makes projections for? Is it? Go, and, and go ahead, Mr. Houston, that, that, uh, that, that was my question.
Sorry about that, um, let me double check with my engineer, um, I don't wanna give you the wrong answer. I can get that answer back to you tomorrow. Um, I do know from a storm event, they go, I think, ten, twenty-five, and a hundred years, from a floodplain standpoint. Um, that part I do know. Um, awesome, if you, can you all see the storm, the storm word, or the hydrology checklist?
Bigly, it's a little small. I don't know if you can close the, um, the other box.
Let me see this, uh, this helps. Sorry. How about that?
Yes, we can definitely see that.
All right, um, let me know when you want me to go, to go to the second page of the checklist.
You, you can go to the second page. All right, uh, uh, thank you, thank you so much for that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share, um, I'm gonna share my screen now, um. One of, one of the reasons that, that I'm bringing this up is that I have been doing lots of, uh, visits to different neighborhoods around, uh, each particular issue, and there, there seems to be a pattern, this is, this is actually, uh, a, a set of home conditions before. But there seems to be a pattern where whatever is approved, um, whatever sort of hydrology studies are being approved, whatever is being approved to, to examine runoff and conditions, uh, doesn't seem to take the long view of what flattening land and paving things, uh, paving streets will do for runoff in all of these, you know, all of these issues. So we have these neighborhoods that are built, um, and the first few years, everything looks fine. But, you know, after five or ten years, it, it, it doesn't, where, you, you see these deep trenches, uh, a- a- uh, and, and all of these runoff issues. So I do think that, um, in the long term, we may need to look at, uh, if our evaluations of, of runoff and, 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 and water issues are really comprehensive or long-term enough, uh, as we are, you know, uh, making these assessments. And then, uh, I, I, I wanna say we do have, uh, we do have some very vocal, we have a, we have a minority of very vocal, uh, community members, and I do think that there are some serious, uh, concerns and fears about urbanization and density. A, a lot of folks moved out here, my family included, forty years ago, um, moved out here to get out of the city, right? And so we, I, and I, I don't wanna, we just have to be careful, uh, uh, to take those things into consideration. Um, I will, uh, seconding something that um, Councilwoman Williams discussed, I will, I will share this, this other graphic that when we think about how we want to, um, grow this city, we can only provide so many services with tax levels that we're at. So, uh, if we want to provide more services, we're going to have to either increase the amount of revenue we're generating in our commercial areas, which is something that I've been a big fan of. Or we will have to have, uh, more density, but as you can see, um, in, in this one of my favorite diagrams about government. Uh, you can't have, uh, you can't have more services without generating more revenue, um. Lastly, I would say, I, 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 I talk a lot about, uh, this city being uh, or, or, or about our need to be black on purpose. And I think that this is one of the places that it shows up the most because people have real, uh, concerns about being taken advantage of by developers. I think when we, I know that when, that when, that when we if, if we take time to think about how the trauma we have experienced as a, as a people influences our policymaking, uh, it changes the way that we hear things. And, and what I hear when people are raising these objections to development is that they're worried about being taken advantage of by developers. And those fears are not unfounded. There has been many generations of ex- of, of, of exploitation uh, that we've experienced, and I don't we're not going to, we're, we're not going to repair that in one or two zoning decisions. But really, in how we develop the city over time and the stewardship that we show in these developments. So I want, I want people on all sides to understand that, you know, whether we approve or don't approve something um, to really look at how we are developing the city over time and what we are allowing over time, uh, to be the real test uh, of, of, of whether we're, we're making good decisions and not on any one specific development. My last question would be, is, is there currently a condition or a, a plan for staggered setbacks in this community?
It's required per our code now.
Okay, for all of, for all of our, all, all across our city?
All across our city.
All right, well, thank you so much, um, and with that, I will close this hearing.
Ready for the next case? So the next case is a alcohol license application. It's a public hearing for an alcohol license for twenty-seven forty-nine Hillendale LLC doing business as Neighborhood Food Mart for an alcohol license for retail sales of wine and malt beverages at twenty-seven forty-nine Flatshows Road, South Fulton, Georgia, three oh three four nine. Police.
Yes, good evening, City Mayor, City Council, and others. The application for the neighborhood Food Mart located at twenty-seven forty-nine Flatshows Road is for a change of ownership. The applicant has met all required requirements to obtain this alcohol license at this location. The location previously held an alcohol license and staff recommendation is approval.
All right, uh, is the applicant available?
Good evening, Mayor Khalid and members of council. My name is Dwayne Martin. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Who is also joining me this evening, Ms. Goulshan Lalani. I'll be brief, um, as the lieutenant said, this application is for a change of ownership for a license to sell beer and wine by the package at the convenience store known as Neighborhood Food Mart, twenty-seven forty-nine Flatshows Road. Ms. Lalani has experience as a holder of beer and wine package licenses holding a license for a convenience store in the city of Atlanta for the past two years. That business was a new construction built in the southeast section of the city of Atlanta. That business has operated in compliance with the law without any citations or violations since opening. And she looks forward to operating this particular convenience store in the city of South Fulton uh, and being an asset to the community. We're happy to answer any questions that the city council can have about this application. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I'm sorry, I, I, I don't know if I say we're, we're opening the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Clerk, are there any, um, respondents in opposition?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, we did not receive any comments in support or opposition to this, uh, application.
All right, I'm going to, uh, open up our council comments and questions. I'm sorry, let me, let me, uh, close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I don't wanna close the public hearing, I'm sorry, uh, council comments and questions. I'm gonna begin with the representative for that district, which is Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Williams, do you have any questions or comments?
I did not have any questions or comments, um, you know, as was stated, this is an existing store that already, um, sells liquor, well, not liquor, but already, already sells alcohol. And, you know, it, as a transfer, there's really, for one ownership, one owner to the next, there's really nothing more to add.
All right, uh, all right, seeing no other questions and comments, now I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, Mr. Clerk, you wanna sound the next item?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that was the last item, so, uh, you're free to adjourn this meeting and, uh, we can reconvene the work session at your leisure.
All right, I will, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I moved it with John.
So move.
Properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to adjourn, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams, I'm sorry, Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
The alcohol zoning public hearing is adjourned at seven twenty-four P M.
All right, um, I will take, um, entertain another motion.
And move we reconvene work session?
So move.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? And now, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to reconvene the work session, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Work session is reconvened at seven twenty-five P M.
All right, uh, there's, there's, there's nothing.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
There is a motion to go on executive session, it's been, uh, properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Can we have a ten-minute recess before we start executive session, sir?
All right, uh, that, that, that sounds like a, a or start, we'll just say we're gonna start it at what, uh? All right, uh, there's been a motion made to start executive session at seven forty-five.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, uh.
And for executive session for real estate personnel and litigation.
Litigation. All right, we have, uh, a motion for executive session for personnel, real estate, and litigation beginning at seven forty-five. Did I get all that?
There's twenty minutes, I'm not, not ten.
So you said seven forty-five, so I mean, we can, that's fine.
So, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Hi.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
We are recessed at seven twenty-six P M, and the executive session will begin at seven forty-five P M.